Okay, horse, okay, over here, this way. Emia Sadua, she's gonna be also meeting with the pledge allegiance. Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one and indivisible.
Right. And Emia Sadua is one of the daughter's granddaughter? Granddaughter. Thank you both, you did great.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the invocation, who's gonna lead us, uh, Will Aitin? Good to have you here, Will.
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we praise you and thank you today for your blessing. We thank you for this free land in which we live and pray that we never take our heritage for granted. We're grateful for the young men and women who are even now serving their country in the Middle East and pray your protection over them. And especially, we thank you, Father, for blessing our community. Bless our leaders, Father, give them wisdom and guidance and direction. Bless us, Father, as we seek to serve you. We'll give you all of the praise and all of the glory, in the precious name of our Lord, for we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. City Secretary, can I now?
Okay, we have item number one is a proclamation for Fernando Luis Mendez.
Pardon me?
Can I read that? Is Fernando Luis Mendez available?
Public, uh, comment. Uh, we're gonna limit, because there's so many, so many, um, applied to speak, we're, uh, limited to fifteen minutes. We're gonna limit it to one minute, so please try to get to the point.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, our item number one is a proclamation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that's for Fernando Luis Mendez.
Okay, please come forward, Mr. Mendez. Uh, would you read the proclamation?
Yes. Come on in here.
Chess, that's great, congratulations.
To the middle over there. A proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, commending Fernando Luis Mendez Jr. for his achievements in chess competition. Go ahead, you can go ahead and read it. Whereas Fernando Luis Mendez Jr. was born to Fernando and Griselda Mendez in Brownsville, Texas, on December twenty-third, nineteen ninety-six. And whereas Fernando Luis Mendez Jr. began to learn chess at the age of three, playing his first tournament at age four while in pre-K and has played continuously since then. And whereas Fernando Luis Mendez Jr. has won state tournaments in the kinder division, primary division, elementary division, and has won first place at the Texas Scholastic Chess Tournament for five years in a row, and in fact, has never lost a round in that tournament, winning twenty-nine times with no losses and four draws. And whereas Fernando Luis Mendez Jr. was co-national champion in the grade-two-to-three level at Denver, Colorado, in two thousand and six, and has been featured in numerous media stories, including the CBS News with Katie Couric and Texas Monthly Magazine. And whereas Fernando Luis Mendez Jr. is also a gifted and talented student at Garden Park Elementary School, where he will be a fifth grader in the fall. He loves playing soccer, baseball, and football. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby recognize, commend, and congratulate Fernando Luis Mendez Jr. on his many, many achievements in the world of chess competition, and further wish him many more tournament victories in the future. Done on this, the seventeenth day of July, two thousand and seven, signed by Mayor Pat Ammamada and the City Commission.
This is, uh, special for me, because I've known Fernando Mendez, I think, since he was in first grade, when he started, uh, competing, or before first grade. And, uh, you know, this is the legacy a parent leaves behind his children. And it's, the parents have done very well to bring up this child, this bright child, get him involved in chess, and he's been very successful. But thanks to the father and the mother, the father's a coach in chess. He was all alone when they first started the, uh, the team there at, uh, at Falk? No, at Victoria, right, Fernando? Fernando, so congratulations. Okay, um...
Item number two is a presentation on the Preserve America Award.
Okay, uh, Delinda, would you please come forward and, uh, show the public what we got here. We went to Washington and, uh, this is, uh, to receive this, this award here on behalf of, uh, the First Lady, uh, Preservation, uh, Preserve America. And Delinda and, uh, uh, Mrs. Bruschak and Priscilla went over there also and, uh, they were, they were very, uh, instrumental in helping us get this and, uh, they represented the, the city, you know, superbly and, and I was glad to be a part of the team there. Would you like to comment a few word, words about this award and what you did and all that?
Um, Honorable Mayor and City Commission, if we could just do a quick little presentation to discuss a little bit about exactly what the mayor just spoke about. Again, the Preserve America Award is a White House initiative that encourages and supports community efforts to preserve and enjoy our priceless cultural and natural heritage. Uh, due to collaboration that we were doing on the Historical City Cemetery Project, the MIS Director forwarded a grant opportunity in February about this competitive grant of, uh, Preserve America to both myself and the Brownsville Heritage Complex Director, Ms. Priscilla. The directors, we all meant to evaluate the viability of applying for this grant. We learned that we had to be a Preserve America community. Uh, in checking with our Downtown Development Director, we found out that we were not, at that point in time, a Preserve America community. In the area at that time, Idalgo, McAllen, and Farr, all three were Preserve America communities. We did contact and confirm with Preserve America that we could simultaneously apply for the Preserve America designation and also apply for the grant. Uh, we came before the City Commission on February sixth for resolutions to do both items. Uh, the applications were submitted on February fourteenth with the letter of support from Congressman Ortiz. And in late March, we found out we had received the designation and we also, uh, received the signage on April twenty-seventh, which you see up here, that we hope to in working with the Brownsville Beautification Committee and posting those around the city. We received for that grant, we learned about it on June fourteenth, one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight seventy. Uh, our match for that is the City of Brownsville MIS Department's expertise for eleven thousand sixty. The Brownsville Heritage Complex match for seventy thousand and the BCIC, uh, Explore Historic Brownsville Tour Project, a cash match of fifty-one thousand eight ten. The Downtown Revolization Advisory Commis, Committee, uh, that Commissioner Camarillo is, uh, headed up and started, is at, is acting as the anchor and coordinating these efforts. Again, the Preserve America Grant is to help fund placing kiosks at strategic locations as a part of the historical downtown tours being developed by the Brownsville Hist- Heritage Complex. Again, and what we're trying to do is, uh, do a ceremony that's going to take into account all the different things that we do here in the City of Brownsville along these lines, which will be the Preserve America Community Designation, the Historic Battlefield Trail in Southern Pacific Linear Park, and also the Historic City Cemetery, which is a joint project between the City of Brownsville MIS Department, the Public Works Department, uh, the Brownsville Heritage Complex, and also BCIC. The dedication kickoff will be on Wednesday, October seventeenth, uh, from four to seven, which will include the hike and bike trail ride and a fun run. The actual dedication ceremonies will be on the eighteenth, that will run from three-thirty to eight. Uh, again, we've got several different partners that have been involved at this point in time and hope to get many more by the time October rolls around.
Next one.
Uh, what, uh, the mayor was speaking of again is that the grant ceremonies, uh, were held on this past Thursday, on July twelfth, in the Cannon Office, uh, House Building in Washington, DC. And this is a photo that the mayor, uh, was just speaking of, where he is present there with the First Lady, who, uh, handed out the grant awards and also the head of the Department of Interior.
Thank you, Dr. Barrera, and thank you, uh, Mrs. Bruschak and Priscilla, thank you very much. Let me tell, going there is not easy, because security's so tight, very tight. I had an envelope with a, uh, a label, address li, a label. They wouldn't let me pass it. I had to throw away the, the la, the contents and everything. You just couldn't get through, security was very tight. Thank you all for going and, uh, let's have the presentation from the Greater Brownsville and Centers Corporation, Mr. Jose Barrera, are you here?
Yeah, we're gonna table that, he wants to do it next meeting, 'cause something happened with his mom.
Okay, doesn't require any action, okay. Um, the public comments, um, but before we get started, uh, please, uh, make sure that, that your comments are very limited, because we're limited in time. There's, uh, fifteen people signed up, I think, uh, is that right? Eleven people?
Eleven or twelve.
Eleven people, twelve people? And we're limiting the comments to fifteen people, uh, that are gonna speak. So, uh, one minute, um, fifteen minutes, one minute apiece should be enough. Uh, please don't direct your comments to the commissioners, no personal attacks or anything like that. So, who would be the first one?
Mayor, if I may, could we do maybe two minutes? They, they prepare for, usually they prepare for three-minute speeches.
Uh, the, the, a lot of times fifteen, that would be, uh, eleven, that'd be twenty-two minutes, so... Let's try to keep it, if you can, try to keep it, uh, we'll try to be a little flexible, but try to keep it within a minute. Who's the first one?
First person is Francisco Cifuentes.
Mr. Cifuentes, please come forward. And nobody can respond, everybody knows that, you know, so... Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Francisco Cifuentes, I'm a resident and taxpayer of the City of Brownsville. Uh, this two-dollar deal caught me by surprise and, uh, it was rammed down my throat. And, uh, if you conduct a survey in the next few days, you're gonna find out that, uh, we don't want it. We don't wanna pay those two dollars, regardless of what it is for. Uh, it's very, very hard on us right now and, uh, please bring it, uh, do a public, uh, meeting on it and have the people come in and, and defend themselves. And, uh, another item, I was, uh, watching the last meeting, I didn't like what I saw. Uh, you need to get copies of the Ruber, uh, Roberts Rule of Order. It was a lot of bickering, it looked terrible, and, uh, I think I, uh, I'm a voter and I should be respected for that. Finally, there are some city administrators that think too much of themselves. They don't respect the citizens of Brownsville, and I'm one of them. And I'm one of their bosses, and, uh, they don't respect the citizens and they don't answer phone calls and we don't have their cellular phone numbers, although we pay for those cell numbers. Yesterday, I called...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cifuentes, thank you very much, okay? The next person?
Uh, Mr. Cesar Trevino.
And I, I don't mean to cut you off, as, as, I'm not trying to be rude, but we are short in time, so please, uh, understand.
Good morning, sirs. My name is Cesar Trevino.
Can you put the mic closer to you? And state your name, there you go.
My name is Cesar Trevino from Brownsville, Texas. And I would like to say that three dollars and two dollars is really not a lot of money. And, uh, I was a witness to a guy that was sick at a house and we had to carry him in the stage when he went to the hospital and the guy died. Uh, the fine arts define us between being animals and dogs. I'm, I'm for you guys, I hope you guys keep on going. And I would like to ask for some more money for the police department for burglaries, 'cause I've been burglary's twice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. The next person?
Uh, Mr. Chris Davis.
Gentlemen Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, my name is Chris Davis. And my concern before the commission is the two-dollar tax, no, not a fee, that failed in the July third meeting. Why failed? You needed to count the four votes, gentlemen, you only got three. In section fourteen of Article Five of our city charter, it states, under legislative procedure, "A majority of all members elected on the commission shall constitute a quorum to do business and the affirmative vote of a majority of such quorum present." Let me repeat that, "A majority of such quorum present" "shall be necessary to prove of any matter," I'll repeat, "of any matter." This section is based on an ordinance number ninety-three dash twelve seventy, formed from Proposition Number Seven, which passed by public vote on November second, nineteen ninety-three, with two thousand seven hundred forty-three votes for and five sixty-eight votes against. So in essence, legal counsel, in his valiant attempt to get a word in edgewise...
Thank you.
...gave some unfortunately hurried advice, when he claimed that all that was needed was a majority of votes cast.
Mr. Davis, your time's up, I'm sorry.
Can I ask respectfully to get a couple more minutes in here? I'm about to conclude on this, Mayor.
I'll let you finish in ten seconds.
If the citizens could have a little bit more time than fifteen minutes...
We have a lot of people, Mr. Davis, we really appreciate. Maybe next time you can speak some more, but please follow the rules.
May I finish, may I finish?
I'd like for you to...
For the ratepayers of Brownsville? You don't have to contribute this fee, this city contribution fee. Mr. Ammada admitted as much in today's Herald. Perhaps he knows that technically, this fee never existed. Four votes, gentlemen, not three.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, you know, I appreciate if people adhere to the rules. I mean, we have rules for a reason and, uh, it would be welcome if you did that. It'd make things run a little smoother. Uh, City Secretary, who's the next person?
Orlando Carlos Trevino.
Mr. Trevino, please come forward. Your minute's up just in your walk. I'm just kidding you.
Now, we're black, it's not good. Okay, and, uh, no, uh, my name's Orlando Carlos Trevino, Mayor, Commissioner, uh, City Manager, Charlie Kabler, public audience. Basically, I came to speak up on the two-dollar fee. I personally don't approve of it. I, the reason I don't approve it, I'm gonna try and make it quick and simple, is because that two-dollar fee for elderly, two-dollar fee for fixed income, and two-dollar fee for low-income people will affect them. You're talking a lot of people that can't afford medical and yet that two-dollar fee will get them to and from across the border to get medical attention for their children. I got commissioners that I have, I walked, I did this, I did that for them. First thing was, my, my wife is sick, we go back and forth to Galveston. Every penny counts, because of the cost of the fuel. And for somebody to vote two dollars, when, and when it's, you got forty-four thousand that you're penalizing, when you got a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, uh, users, is unfair. Lastly, if they do not pay the two-dollar fee, then you're saying, "We will send you to a collection agency." And you send somebody to a collection agency for a two-dollar fee that they do not wish to pay for animals, maybe you all are lovers, maybe I'm not. But the fact, like, I'm just gonna finish five seconds. That, basically, what that, what that collection fee does, it raises a red flag and it, it, it hurts your credit. Now, you people that are for your district, think about it next time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trevino. Okay, who's next?
Mr. Don Crowe.
Okay, Mr. Crowe. Please come forward.
My name is Donald Crowe, I'm the president of the Camille Playhouse. I'm also a lifelong resident of Brownsville. And, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, I am definitely here to support the two-dollar item. People do not realize how critical the arts are to the people of Brownsville. Our summer program provides a outlet for two hundred young people to learn the magic of theater. It teaches them the discipline, the joy, the magic of performing arts. We were not able to give our dollar this year for the simple reason we do not have the funds. This thirty-three cents a month would certainly enable us to do a great deal more for the young people of Brownsville and we respectfully request that you continue it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Who do you have next, City Secretary?
Mr. Robert Udesty.
Mr. Robert Udesty. Welcome, Mr. Udesty.
Thank you. Robert Udesty, first, you already have an illegal maintenance fee for fifty. For the past twelve years, you collected fifty million dollars. Where did the money go? You, you raised taxes. The animal shelter is already collect, it has a budget of six hundred and twenty thousand dollars and you're gonna give them another six hundred thousand dollars? Boy, I'm here only as one voice, but the voice of many unheard taxpayers and those elderly people on fixed incomes. Number two, people who li, who are ill and disabled and can't afford it. For the majority of people who live on day-to-day low wages, who must struggle to find food, clothing, shelter, and for those people who wanna come here and for one minute, there's no need. They're not heard, this body does not wanna hear them. They are saying to me, "Enough is enough by this body." Animals are more important than people, no. Better, they want better roads, better conditions for the people of Brownsville, and that's what they want. Now, the animals are gonna get an air-conditioned room, better food, medical care, good housing? Well, a lot of people have no means for themselves. It's incredible. A lot of people are telling me, "End this, end this." It's a clown what's going on here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Udesty. Do we have somebody else?
Number seven, Roman Perez.
Mr. Perez?
Good evening, my name is Roman Perez, excuse me for my cold, I, I woke up really sick this morning. Can you all hear me?
Put the mic a little closer to you, there you go.
Um, this past municipal election was my first election as a Brownsville voter. Um, and I must say that I'm deeply saddened after what I just saw the last meeting on television. Um, I voted for a couple of you because of P U B bills, because I felt that they were very, very high. And I looked at last week's, or two weeks' meetings ago. I saw it as a, a sham, because of parliamentary procedure that was just simply failed because of your parliamentarian, your city attorney. I felt simply that several things were, were missing. For example, the chair, I don't believe in parliamentary procedure, should be able to make a motion. He shouldn't be able to make a, um, a second. Um, there's an amendment, he, as Mr. Trony did last week, that should have been a friendly amendment to you, Mr. Ammada, not necessarily, uh, accepting the second from Mr. Atkinson. Uh, just simply that alone, I felt it was in, inappropriate. I also felt that, because you all never opened a public hearing, you all never fully got a chance to hear what people had to say. Recognizing whoever you want to is not always the best way to do it, Mr. Ammada. And I voted for you, I really did. Um, my wife has voted for you several times, for Congress or for whatever. When I first met you, I really liked you and you really made me, uh, very sad. So, please rescind it, uh, Mr. Camarillo, I appreciate you trying to rescind it. I've spoken to a couple of y'all this past couple of weeks and I know y'all are doing a good job, so really listen to us and I hopefully, some of the people that are here are talking about your duality. You all will, uh, support them and rescind it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Do, uh, it was eight?
Uh, George Ferrish, please.
Mr. Ferrish?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is George Ferrish. I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'll keep my remarks very brief, 'cause I know there are a lot of other folks who, who have some things they'd like to, uh, share. Uh, I, I come today before this chamber really as a, as a representative of the fine arts community here in Brownsville. For the past five years, I've had the great pleasure and honor to serve on a number of fine arts boards, the UTB Patron of the Arts Program, the Brownsville Society for the Performing Arts. I served for several years on the board of the Camille Theater and currently, I'm serving as President of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art. And I understand that this is a very controversial issue and I deeply respect the opinions of the Commissioners, uh, who voted against this or who abstained last week. Uh, I do appreciate the fact that, uh, there was a consensus that the arts do need to be supported and some of these issues do need to be supported. I think where there's disagreement is how to do it. So at least we've found common ground in the fact that, uh, we all support the arts. It is a huge importance to our community. The BEDC will tell you that when companies come to Brownsville, one of the first things they ask are, "What is the quality of life like in Brownsville?" They're interested in economic incentives, but they also wanna know that their employees, uh, have exposure to the arts. So, tonight, I just humbly ask you to, uh, consider the arts, not only tonight, but into the future. And let's work together as a community to find creative solutions. And there's always more than one way to skin a cat and so, uh, we welcome the opportunity to work with you and find ways that are agreeable to all the organizations, uh, who bring, uh, quality of life to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Romeo Montalvo.
I was here, uh, the last meeting. And, um, I think, um, I've been in Brownsville for twenty-nine years. I'm not, I'm not a native, but I now consider myself a resident and, um, homeboy. Um, I feel that, um, that the arts are so important in our community. I feel, as I mentioned last time, that the arts are part of our face. You know, we are who we look like. We've, we've, have to be a show of, uh, our culture. I've lost several associates, uh, coming to Brownsville for the simple reason that the wives said, "Why is it for our kids here in Brownsville? What can we do here, uh, there's nothing, there's no activity." We finally got to that point and we need your help. We really need your help, in any way that you can help us. Our museum is struggling, you know, it's a very important building. It's a very important venue, very important place and I really would appreciate, uh, all the help that we, that we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Montalvo. Anybody else?
Mr. John Shergold.
Mr. Shergold?
Gentlemen of the board, I, first of all, I wanna thank you for putting the public at the very beginning of the meeting. As you know, I wrote letters to the editor and came here a few times with some of the old, older board members and y'all be complimented for doing this and letting the public speak, uh, at the beginning, I wanted to say that. I'm here tonight, basically, to talk about my concern about a July fourth incident, a railroad blockage. As some of you recall, I was a prosecutor here at the city for about four years and, uh, I was one of the main, uh, things I did. I made sure that those trains moved on through these railroad tracks, at least tried to. And I saw that on July fourth, that there was a train that blocked out there in a megaland area. That's an area that's really dear to my heart, because a lot of my family lives out there in Riverside and, uh, I just wanna let you know that I thought the trains were gone. When I ran for City Commission in two thousand and three, people said, "John, don't worry about it, those trains are gonna be gone." Well, it's four years later and they're still there out there on Palm Boulevard. There were two ambulances that were dispatched that evening. And we need to make sure that that statute, uh, is enforced. I hope that it's still being prosecuted. These Union Pacific Railroad shouldn't be telling Brownsville what to do. We should be allowing them to conduct business, but not to create danger. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shergold.
Mr. Eladio Diaz?
Mr. Diaz, welcome to our chambers.
Mayor, City Councilman, I'm here representing Cameron Works and the STEP Committee. The STEP Committee is the South Texas Energy Partners. We are conducting or hosting our second annual Energy Conservation and Green Building Conference on August seventeenth and eighteenth at the ITech Campus. The whole purpose of our conference is to raise the energy conservation consciousness of residents in Cameron County and Brownsville in particular. We are in a deep energy crisis. The price of oil is never gonna go down again to fifty dollars or forty dollars. The demand for energy is gonna continue as the population continues to explode. So we have to do something to try and help this out or help the situation out. So, the conference is totally free... So, the conference is totally free. There's no registration fees. We're going to have a luncheon, we're having speakers, and let me add that the whole conference is being funded with private money. There's no federal money being spent on this conference. We are having an expo the second day, where we wish to have the public attend, and we're making concentrated efforts, and this is why we're here tonight. We're making concentrated efforts to get the public there. It'll be an expo, exhibits, appliances, builders, just things that people can look at and see how they can start conserving energy. Again, we just want to invite you, Mayor, we sent you a letter inviting you personally to the conference. I think it was right after you got elected the next day. So, thank you very much, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That is all, Mayor.
That's all. We welcome all the public comments. That's transparency. You don't have to agree with the commission or anything like that, but I appreciate everybody coming here and voicing their concerns or their opinions respectfully and going by the rules. Thank you for coming, and please come back anytime you want to have something to say. The next item.
Item number four, Mayor's Report.
Okay. We've been here three weeks, I have been here three weeks, and I campaigned with the interest of Brownsville. It's not easy being mayor. You have to make decisions, and I have an eighty-twenty rule, that if you're doing what's right, if you believe you're doing what's right, based on which you know, you're still not going to please everybody. You'll probably have twenty people, twenty percent are going to disagree with you, eighty percent are going to agree with you. But you have to make decisions and go forward. In the past three weeks, we hit the ground running. I know some of the issues, people have been outspoken about it for and against, but I think the effect it's going to have in Brownsville is positive. I'm asking people, give me a chance, just give me a chance to show some results that we're going to be better off for it. And you will have to ask yourself, are we better off now than we were yesterday? For instance, on the no-kill policy and the pets that everybody's talking about, we stopped the puppy meals at the flea market. That's going to help us control the population in the streets of Brownsville, which creates a problem for the mailman, and the health, and a social problem. It's a big problem that hasn't been addressed, we're trying to address it. The fine arts had no money, I mean, it wasn't really being ignored, we addressed that. The Camille Playhouse, same thing. This affects our citizens in a positive way, but I'm asking you to give me the chance to show you that we can all be better off for it, even if you disagree, disagree respectfully. We hit the ground running, like I said, in the last three weeks. We brought some change here. I think we raised the standard a little bit here, trying to get things done. I know it wasn't easy, there's some disagreements, but it's something that we have to adjust to, and I think this is a good example. We're adjusting, and I think we're going to move forward. I'm going to ask my commission not to talk to each other individually, to address the chair, that way it's not personal, and if we keep everything, you know, outside this door that's personal, keep it out there. Here, we're here to serve you, and we can disagree respectfully and do the people's business. I went to Washington, not only for Preserve of America, but the controversy about the fence that's being built here, it's a very sensitive subject, and I introduced a plan that would perhaps be worthy of consideration by Congress and the Senate. Instead of building the physical fence, that we build the Weir Dam and get some funding from Homeland Security. Because if we build a Weir Dam, it's going to raise the level of the river twenty-six, twenty-seven feet, and it's going to widen the river, and it's going to back it up forty-two miles. And they can be patrolled with speedboats, it probably require less boots on the ground, maybe some electronic surveillance equipment, and I think it will deter the illegal activity. And we took this plan to Washington, and they embraced it. Congressman Salomon Ortiz, Senator K. Bailey Hutchinson, Senator Cornyn, I met with also Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez, who's a part of the Subcommittee in Homeland Security. They all agreed to help. So, we're looking for solutions to the problems you're concerned about, whether it's a fence, whether it's ambulances, that we need ambulances, or more for the fine arts. We also have lower utilities. If you read the paper today, we cut back on the customer service charge by three dollars, we cut back on the penalty of from ten percent to five percent, because the poorest affected the most. We take that into account. No bank pays ten percent on their money. They pay the maximum five percent. So, we felt it was fair to lower the penalty to five percent. So, we're trying, even though, you know, some people may disagree on that, that we shouldn't lower it down to five percent, but we're really trying to make a difference for everybody here. There's two people that I want to introduce here, they're going to give a part of my report here. HUD had cut funding down tremendously in the past few years. When I was here before, we were building two, three hundred homes a year, and the money's dwindled down to four, ten homes a year. And I was going to Washington, but I made a call to the HUD director and invited him to come to Brownsville, but I couldn't attend the meeting, so I had my representative there along with the city manager, and I'm going to have him come up here and give you a report of that meeting. Mr. Golansky, Arangolansky, would you please come forward here and real briefly tell them about your meeting? This show you what this administration is trying to do to help Brownsville, and it's positive for Brownsville.
Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. On the last Thursday, Mr. Lopez, Richard Lopez came down from HUD, he's the regional director, and he presented, by the request of the mayor, he came down here because Brownsville since two thousand and four was denied millions of dollars in money for HUD. CDCB here in Brownsville used to build about two hundred homes a year and help people, the low-income people, and that was taken away from us. Some money did stay here, but it went to apartment buildings, and those apartment buildings is just people that have to pay rent instead of buying their own home and building equity. So, by the request of the mayor, Mr. Lopez came down here, and we had a very good meeting, and we almost straightened out, that they will come back and give us back that money. If he wouldn't intervene on that, because for four years, for three years since two thousand and four, the mayor before did never did that effort to contact directly HUD to see what the problem was, to straighten it out. We asked this person to please guide us and show us what we have to do to get it back, and he made it very easy. I think within two, three months, we will get that money back and be able to use it. At this point, we only built ten houses this last year, where CDCB used to build over two hundred houses a year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Golansky. You know, this goes to show that citizens will care about Brownsville, can work with this administration to make us successful. We're all going to benefit from that. Real briefly, we also worked on the recycling project, Dr. Sandra Garcia. And these are citizens who want to get involved, who want to help, and we should support them. And this affects us all. This administration is trying to do what's best for Brownsville.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, I'm here basically representing the Brownsville Ecological Development, which is under the direction of Mayor Pat Amada. This was created for the specific purpose for exploring alternatives for waste management, alternative fuels, and protecting the environment. As a part of this initiative, we are proposing a method of recycling as a pilot program underneath the city of Brownsville's leadership. It will be a cooperative effort between the city and a private company in order to offset the expenses involved in recycling. Carlos Ayala will go into a little bit more on the fiduciary responsibilities that the city will forego with this plan. At this point, we are proposing that E S D Recycling, Inc. come in under a memo of understanding with the city to offer these services at the Elizabeth location for no cost to the city. In exchange, the city will still offer the use of present equipment and paid utilities. In addition, the private company, E S D, will place twelve bins in strategic areas of the city to include churches, private property, and city property in order to best serve the city as a whole. Attached is a list of locations to date, which I will, I'm hoping to distribute to you all. The scheduled pickup and manpower to oversee the services of these bins will be provided by E S D. They will have a hold harmless clause for their employees and covered workers' comp as required by state law, so as to not have any liability issues for the city. This will be a six-month pilot program with the expectation that a material recovery facility will be approved by the state for actual collection at the landfill. This will serve as a secondary support system for recycling and also allow the city to continue to charge per pound the entire rate prior to any compression or collections at the landfill. E S D will also serve that site upon approval with manpower at no charge to the city. We will put out an R F P after six months to open the bidding process in order to be fair and equitable to other companies. The city of Brownsville will save approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars per year with the added benefit of twelve collection bins throughout the city with no out-of-pocket costs. There will be dual efforts, both with E S D and the city, to promote, educate, and market the recycling efforts to include the city's Channel Twelve, B I S D school system, the museum, UTB T S E, the airport, local churches, and other news media as part of the public service announcements. City employees will be required to partake in these recycling efforts as a good-faith effort to ensure its implementation into the mainstream. B I S D will also be approached for implementation under the science program, "Modules for Recycling" throughout the district to educate elementary students.
Thank you. This is just a proposal, it's not something that will be coming to us, but at least we have people looking at it to try and find ways to recycle, and if it can work, we'll do it, it'll be considered here, we'll do it, or if something better comes around, you know.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
E S, okay, in the agenda, it simply says Mayor's Report. We didn't get any information about E S D, who this company is. Are they, have they been awarded a contract? Has there been a bid process?
Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the city commission, E S D is a company that has come to us before, and we did put an R out, an R F P, Request for Proposals, for having a company come in and take over our recycling efforts.
Was this part of a bid process, Mr. Ayala?
No, sir, it was not back then, and it is not now. The thing is that we had some response, but no response back when it came down to the brass tacks. I myself have been with the city, and we have several people in the audience have been in here. Our point is that we know a lot about recycling. We know the stuff that we do as a city, we know what other cities are doing. I've seen it throughout the state, and several other people have seen it throughout the state that work for us here in the city. The issue becomes is to our efforts have been minimal in the areas that we look to go to. Paper, we've done, we've had efforts here in the city also itself. My point is that if we bring in a pilot project between three to six months, make some kind of memo of understanding, and these people are willing to put up their equipment and effort.
But it'll be up to the subject of approval of the commission.
Oh, absolutely.
This is not being done without the approval of the commission. This is just a status report of what people are doing to try and make things better for Brownsville in the area of recycling, just like the HUD program, that was not being addressed, and I had a private citizen who's familiar with housing that was willing to help us. So, we're trying to do, this administration is trying to do all it can to address those needs, but it will be subject to the commission approving when the time comes.
We have sought legal counsel on this issue, and it says as a pilot program to come up so we can then see how the community is going to react to this aggressive plan that is proposed, and then we can put an R F P of consequence together with some kind of surety of that's where we want to head. We do recycle at the landfill. I know we've been heavily criticized the years past, but we've taken our tires, and now we recycle them, we use them, we make tire bills out of them, stabilize banks, things of that effort, and other cities use them, like in Dallas, Texas, to stabilize some of their expressways where they have bad erosion problems. And we've done it back, that type of project also to help our drainage issues. We do, we have a full circle recycled product compost, which we use very heavily in our parks area to be able to grow any kind of vegetation that we can on our slopes at the landfill to keep them from eroding, and it's been very successful. It's one of the premier composting efforts in the state, and those were done through grants and stuff that we were doing at times. Our Christmas trees are recycled in the same compost product.
Mr. Ayala, I don't think anybody has any objection to recycling. I think that everybody can see the inherent benefits of recycling. My concern was simply that this was an item that popped up, and we now have a company that we're going to present with a, the proposal, and there hasn't been a bid process. You're saying that no other companies had come forward in the past to want a bid on this?
No, they have.
Assistant City Manager, let me tell you this. This is the report. This is nothing to take action on, this is nothing we're going to do. So, I don't want to get into that, because I don't think we should get into that right now. This is simply a report. We can't, you know, when the time comes, the recommendation's made for discussion and making decision, then I think we should be doing that. This is simply a report on my behalf from people who are working with this administration to make things better.
May I ask a question, please? Mr. Ayala, if the city of Brownsville was to undertake an aggressive recycling plan, how expensive would it be to Brownsville, to the city of Brownsville? An aggressive recycling plan? How expensive? Because I think I asked the public works.
I have to go back and get to what I just said. This is just a report. We can put this up for a workshop if you want, okay? We can put it for a workshop.
All right.
Answer the question if you can, and just, let's move on.
Your points are well-taken, Commissioner. Trony, we plan to come back to you with a full legal issue of how we plan to do this, and it'll be up to certainly your wishes.
We don't want to discourage citizens from getting involved. Citizens are willing to get involved, let's welcome with open arms. It wasn't being addressed, it's here in the forefront now. Whether it's good or not, it'll have to be judged on its merits when it comes here. So, right now, I want to thank Dr. Sandra Garcia, and I want to thank Dr., I mean, Mr. Arangolansky for participating, trying to make things better here. Thank you. Thank you both.
Mayor, may I make a comment real quick?
Certainly.
I'll be short. This afternoon, I had the pleasure to meet with Ms. Garcia and Mr. Ayala, and I like the direction they're going in. I think it's imperative that some of the data and the information they have put together, it's real important, and we look at it and we review it down the road. One of the things that we did discuss this afternoon is, I had already been in communication with Healthy Communities. If you're not too aware of, Healthy Communities is an organization that really has not been recognized by the city of Brownsville that has collected data. I vow to Ms. Garcia to work with her and Ms. Ayala so that we can also share in that information. I think it's going to be critical. It'll tell us how much what we're looking at, as Commissioner Garcia has requested. At the same time, look at one of the pilot programs they want to do. They've discussed with me pilot program out in the Lakewood area, also out in the Westside area. I don't want to take it all for myself, they've requested it, but hopefully down the road, we'll be able to do it in each of the districts. But the mechanism in collecting all that is real important, and we don't have many companies that do that down here. And hopefully, if we step up to the challenge and we move forward on this, hopefully, that'll bring new industry, new business now to want to do the same.
Thank you, Commissioner, and again, this is a report here, and we welcome the public to get involved, and the commission also. Okay, thank you, and let's move on to the next item, please, Secretary.
Item number five, Consent Agenda Items A through H.
Does anybody have any questions, or they want to?
Mayor, at the last meeting, I'd asked item twelve be voted on set, well, or be corrected, I should say. As the voting read, what do you call it? It had me as for the euthanizing, I actually had abstained, and it doesn't reflect that on the minutes. So, you and I, we decided we tabled that last week to this week. So, I do want to show that it was an abstention on my part on item number twelve of the minutes on five, on set, on five A.
Legal, I don't, I don't.
I believe that what he suggests is that the record, the minutes did not correctly reflect his vote.
That it shows that's correct.
Have you checked the video?
I believe that the city secretary's office has.
I know I have.
Stella, is that right? That?
That's item twelve.
Yes, ma'am.
Item twelve on five A.
I don't recall looking at the video, but.
You don't recall looking at it?
We can go ahead and take.
So, what I would ask is, Commissioner, table this one to give the chance to legal to.
Table number eight?
I think if he feels that he did not vote.
Take it out.
If he knows that he did not vote.
No, but it's not what he knows, it's what he may recollect, may be correct or not, but you've got to look at the video to be precise, I would say.
I did look at it, but let's not just take my word for it, let's have others review it, so.
Yeah.
We can table it.
If the commissioner's willing, let's just pull it out, and let's vote on the others. Is that okay? You got a motion to table that item? Okay, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's the whole minute.
Okay? Any nays? It carries, then. Okay, so the rest of the items, everything's okay with everybody?
Mayor, on the next set of minutes, on item number eight, and we spoke of this early before the meeting, at the last, at the last commission meeting's agenda, on one of the, on item number eight, you. you verbally informed the, the commission, and I guess you wanted this in your motion, yet it's not stated under the minutes requesting seat arrangements, that sort of thing. You, I know you verbally mentioned a few things, and it's not noted on the minutes, and so I just want to make sure you want to make that correction so you do have the authority to do so.
Well, I, I think the minutes don't have to reflect the detail of what was said, but it can reflect how the vote outcome was. Is that my understanding, City Secretary? Do you, it doesn't have to reflect the detail of what was said.
I would leave that up to you. I, I.
No, it doesn't.
Jim, do you have any idea on that?
The legal standard is that it has to adequately reflect the action that was taken and the votes that were cast, but obviously, we can't go into every detail that occurs during the meeting.
Okay. I mean, everybody remembers.
Or are we going to have to from now on?
No.
That's the question.
I, I just thought it was just that one item that I wanted, I wanted to focus on.
Okay.
Because it was said, it was just said out loud. It wasn't opposed to, I move to accept what the mayor's comments were as well as what is stated in the document. That, that's my question.
The reason for bringing the minutes to the commission for your approval is so that you have an opportunity to review them and as a, as a body to correct anything that's misstated or incorrectly recorded. So that's the purpose for allowing the commission to review them and to, and to vote whether or not the minutes are correct as we've recorded them or not. If they're, and that, again, involves a vote of the majority of the commission.
The vote, the vote was what it was, right. Okay, can we have a motion to approve all the rest of the consent item agendas?
So move.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Longoria, and seconded by Mr. Commissioner Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, all opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Mr. Camarillo?
Yes, Mayor.
Nay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just letting the City Secretary know. Thank you.
Mayor, the other issue is on that item, on the, on the last week's agenda item, we're not correcting the minutes. We're, we're basing it on what, on what is stated on this, on the document. On the PUB fee, it stated as it's, as it, the motion, it did not pass, it failed. And everybody's, everybody's voted.
Yes, I think it was, it was, it, it, there was a wrong, they passed, and somehow somebody said it failed.
Right, that would, that would be my error.
Okay, so that can be corrected.
If you're going to go with a three, two, two vote?
Well, I thought it failed.
Or was it going to fail because?
Well, we're going to go by the minutes that was there when, when we, uh, were discussing that, and the vote was taken, it was stated they had passed. We tabled A.
Based on the minutes that we just approved, it failed.
We tabled A. We tabled consent A.
Commissioner, we've already voted on those set of, those set of minutes. We're looking at the second set of minutes, which was the last week's meeting.
We tabled consent A. We, all of it. You didn't say part of it. You tabled A.
The new me, we're talking about the new meeting.
July 3rd.
You've taken a second vote on the second set of minutes. We're going back to the second set, when I specifically said item number eight, you've taken a vote, and you passed the minutes. Exactly, but you all have taken a second vote, and Mr. Garcia, please correct me if I'm wrong, but they voted on the second set of minutes, and clearly in the set of minutes, it states as the item has failed.
Mayor, maybe I need to go back to the meeting itself to clarify. At the meeting, I was asked how to count the votes, and I was interpreting Article Five, Section Fourteen of the Charter, where it says that a majority vote is required of all members present for any motion to pass. I was considering at that time that if a person abstained from the vote, that they were not present for the purpose of the vote. After rereading the Charter and along with the City, the City Secretary, I believe that what the Charter intends to say, in the spirit of the Charter, is that there, that it's asking us to require a member of all members physically present, whether they actually vote or not vote. And that was the correction or the change that we made to.
But an, an abstention is not a vote. You can't count it as a vote.
I understand that.
Okay, and the majority is a majority, you know, it has nothing to do with an abstention. Here, the majority ruled. And it also says there, that, that, this is in reference to a resolution or ordinance, if I understood that right.
Mayor, if we can have the.
Please allow the attorney, please do.
The wording, and I'm paraphrasing, but the wording from the Charter in Article Five, Section Fourteen is that there's a requirement that there be a majority vote of all members present to pass any matter. And I was considering the abstention from voting as, as not being present in the vote, but.
You have to, they're here.
It goes on to say that in the case of.
But it's not a vote.
Case of resolution or ordinance, it requires a majority of the entire commission, whether they're physically.
Okay, but at the time, and, and then maybe you need to go back and look at the, at the video, and maybe you need to get a, a Attorney General's opinion, because at that time, it was announced that it passed.
I know, sir.
And that passed, okay?
And that was.
So, so in order to go back, you have to change that. Right now, the minutes are wrong. The minutes are wrong. So please make the correction, that it's, instead of not, not passed, it, it passed, okay? Okay.
Again, Mr. Garcia.
I'm sorry you're out of order. I'm sorry, I'm sorry you're out of order, because we're discussing here housekeeping matters on the minutes. What was said on the minutes was that it passed, whether you agree with it or not, that's what it said. That's what the City Secretary acknowledges, and that's what the City Attorney acknowledges. So we got to go by that.
Mayor, and again, and that's why I brought up item number eight. I brought up item number eight to be considered, and voting was, was taken by this court right now on the second set of minutes. Nobody made any objections to the item that said failed. So if that's the case, this commission, this body voted.
That's not true. That's not so.
Okay, well then, please somebody tell me I'm incorrect, and.
Well, we can correct that because I thought you said letter A, not eight.
No, item eight.
No, wait a second, wait a second. Wait, wait, wait a second. Just because the minutes are wrong, listen to me. Just because the minutes are wrong doesn't make it right, and doesn't make it legal. You can go back and correct the minutes. The video will show how the vote was and how it was interpreted very clearly. So.
Well, why don't we adopt?
Wait a second. So try and hang your hat on an error made by a human that it did not pass, and try to say that it did not pass.
Let's clarify then. That's why I brought up these two items, and I'm seeking clarification.
I think let's let him go back and, and look at it, and, and make sure we get it right.
Again, you're correct that we can go back and change minutes even after they've been approved if we find an error.
That's right.
But I believe that I incorrectly answered the question when I was asked at the meeting. I believe that I, the information I gave resulted in an incorrect voting count.
Well, then you need to do.
So this is a correct?
I think, I think, no, no, the, the, the minutes are wrong. It needs to be corrected. I think what you need to do is then go back, do some research, and get an Attorney General's opinion, because this is your opinion right now, which conflicts with your prior opinion.
I'll seek some other authority, Mayor, but I, I know from past experience, the Attorney General's office will not interpret a city charter.
Okay, so the others, but right now, the issue that it is right now, we're talking about, and you're an attorney, is the minutes. We're not talking about the dispute of the outcome. It's the minutes.
If the mayor, or if any member of the commission wants to reopen that matter.
Well, I think Commissioner.
It's got to be the prevailing side.
Re note, renotice that we're going to revote on the minutes that were approved earlier tonight, and we would need to, to bring that back and to, and to again vote on whether or not the minutes, as we approved them tonight, are correct or whether they weren't correct.
Well, somebody want to bring out those minutes and correct it to where, instead of says it failed, that to where it passed?
They can bring it back, Jim?
You know, Mayor, also.
She can.
Mayor, also to talk about the AG's opinion. When AG gave an opinion, and, and I know we have this documented regarding, regarding general rule cities, well, we're not general rule. General rule says they cannot assess a tax or any type of fee.
Well, we're getting to a different area.
But home rule.
City Attorney, we're getting to a different area that is before this body right now. You're out of order, you're out of order. Commissioner, you want to bring it back later, we could do it, but right now, the issue's the minutes. Can we please focus on the minutes? Okay, I, I will make the motion. If nobody else, would you rather make the motion?
I would say I would, I would table, I thought he was tabling A, not eight of the. Tabling A, what he said, which says, and the regular meeting, July 3rd. I wanted to table it because it, it said failed in the minutes. I misunderstood you saying A or eight, when I thought you said, did you want to table letter A? Letter A, did you table it?
The first set of minutes that we tabled, from the last week's meetings, because there's two sets of minutes, Commissioners. The first, the first set, 5A, and then I don't know why they're labeled again 5A when there's two separate meetings. The last, the week before last week's meetings.
Which is June 26th.
June 26th, and then the July 3rd meetings. So they should have been, and I know, you know, we.
We should have separated, but I was under the idea that you were tabling all of A.
But you can bring it back.
Well, I, I would like to bring it back.
Okay. You got a second?
If you want to table A, I was with you.
Okay, you have a motion?
Oh, no, all of it. I was tabling all of A.
You have a motion. Now, do you have a second to, to bring it back?
Can I make a, can I make a comment, please?
You got a second?
Yes, I do second.
Okay, second. Okay, you make a comment?
Yes.
Commissioner Longoria?
I need you to rule here at this meeting. I want to open up the previous one on the June 26th. I want to open up the July 3rd. And I want you to rule and tell us if we abstained, that the abstention counts, that it doesn't count. Bring back the Marcus Parsa issue, bring back the kayak, bring all of that. I want detail.
But Commissioner, we're, we're out of order because that's not the issue before us right now, and I'd love to do that if you want to do that, but I think we need to focus on the minutes only right now.
And it is, it is on the minutes, Mayor. I just, I cannot.
You want to bring back?
I cannot. We're going, we're going into August.
I understand.
And we're still on, on debating and quarreling and bickering over June 26th meeting. And like I said, what I'm addressing, Counsel, is I need you to rule here. No gray. I need black and white, and I need, you know what? If the PUB deal went down, because we had two abstentions, and the law says that we, that those two abstentions count as a non-voting, and these three commissioners, deal passed. Then it passed.
Then we have, then we have to go back and redo everything. If that's what you tell us to do, that's what we will do. We'll go back to, like he, the Commissioner says, the kayak and everything we've done that you gave bad inf, bad interpretation on. But let's get back to the issue at hand right now. If, if he does that, then we'll bring everything back.
Then that's why we're tabling.
Right now, let's focus on the minutes.
Well, then that also raises the issue, should we follow Robert's rules? I mean, do we need to have some sort of?
Wait a second.
I mean, obviously, there's a break.
You need to be recognized. You need to be recognized, please, gentlemen. Let's focus, let's focus on the issue of the minutes. Counselor, there's a motion and a second to bring back the minutes to correct them. Is that okay?
It is permissible to reopen the motion and to vote again on.
Grab the mic, Jim.
Okay, so let's, 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 okay. The motion is to correct the, the minutes where it says it failed to say it passed. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor, but I don't know if we're addressing the underlying problem, which is.
We'll get to the underlying problem later on. Right now, let's focus on the minutes, because that's what's before this body, okay? Okay, so we have a motion to bring it back and correct it.
Mayor, he's saying that it is correct the way it is right here. That's what he's saying. That's what he's saying.
You're saying it's correct?
Mayor, I, as I interpret the Charter and in conjunction with City Secretary, I believe that the Charter is referring to the members physically present.
No, I'm not asking you that. I'm asking you what was said, how it was recorded.
I think at the meeting, correct, I said that the motion passed. I think I got it wrong.
Okay, let's show that. That's what we're talking about. Why are you taking someplace down out? Down the road that we're, we're not, we're not there.
Saying it's wrong, though, Mayor.
Okay, so let's, we got a motion right now. Let's vote on it, to bring back and correct the minutes.
Can we have clarification of what the minute, the motion is?
Pardon me?
Can we have clarification of what the motion is?
Jim, currently, the way the meeting, the meetings, the, how it reads, did it pass or did it fail?
My interpretation is that the meeting, that the motion failed. At the time, I said that it passed. I believe that I was.
But the way it is right now, it's correct.
That's mine and the City Secretary's.
He keeps saying that. How it was recorded. We have a motion here to bring out back the minutes and correct how it was recorded. You want to get into something else, we'll do that later, but right now.
Hold on, real quick, real quick. You're, you're, it's your interpretation that it failed now. So the minutes are right?
If we go with a four to three.
Then, then that's the way it is.
I moved to adopt the minutes as, as they are right now. It has the correct information on it.
I, I disagree with you, Counsel, because that's not what was said, and the City, City Secretary acknowledges that's not what was said.
There's a motion.
Okay, so then what, what do the minutes say?
Second.
I was asked the question.
No, they got to withdraw the motion here, because we have a motion already on the floor, okay? You withdraw your motion?
I'm not going to withdraw my motion. All I want to do is we can approve the minutes of June 26, 2007, and table July 3rd to strain out what happened. That's it.
Okay. So you, you want to bring, it's a different motion now.
Okay, the motion I'm saying is to approve the meeting of June 26, 2007 of A, and table the second part of A, the meeting of July 3rd, so we can figure out what's going on.
Okay.
But with the corrections on that item.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Can we have a second? All in favor?
Sorry, who said?
Aye. All opposed? Say nay.
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 Nay, Mayor.
City Secretary, did you get the nays?
Okay, I have Camarillo for a nay, and who else?
Commissioners Sisneros and Commissioners Troyani.
Longoria.
Okay.
Camarillo, Longoria, Sisneros, and Troyani?
Yes.
Four nays.
The minutes were not corrected, and that's why I voted nay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one more, one more outburst, and, and I will regret that.
Avitia, if he talks one more time, he needs to be removed. Come on, it's. He doesn't bother me, don't worry about it. Okay.
He's out of order.
So the other consent items, they're, they're, they're okay? They're okay? The other consent items, they're okay?
So I make, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, can we have a second, gentlemen? Okay, we have a second on the remainder of the consent items. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Say nay. Okay, motion carries. Next item, City Secretary, and I, I thank you for bearing with us, okay? Thank you.
Item six, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint members to the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee.
Okay, we have an even number, so we're going to have, we're going to need one more. Leanne Greer was on the committee before, and she's got a lot of history with that committee, and she's very knowledgeable, and she's very objective. I'd like for this commission to consider appointing her.
I would consider re, appointing Ms. Leanne Greer.
Second.
We got a motion, we have a motion by Mr. Longoria, and a second by Mr. Garza. All in favor? Say aye.
We have some discussion as to who this person is.
We just voted, man.
Well, I understand that's a problem.
I'll open the discussion. Go ahead, let him ask the question.
No, I mean, my question is, is, you know, what information do you have on this person? You said that she'd been on the.
She was in the kayak before, Ms. Commissioner. She was in a kayak from day one, and she's a very good person that, that's well knowledgeable. She's an investor. She owns property. Upstanding citizen.
Said that she's an investor. Is she in real estate? Is she?
Real estate, real estate.
Is she a realtor? What's the?
No, she's an investor. She owns property.
She owns property?
Very qualified person.
Any other questions?
I just have a question if, we can add, right?
We can continue to add, because we have currently seven.
We said, but no, we have eight because the PUB, PUB has one also. So we need a not number.
Who's the one from PUB?
They're going to decide. For right now.
I have one yet.
Pardon me?
We don't have one at this time.
Right now, they don't have one.
So we're at seven.
We're at seven. But no, we need one to get the process going, because PUB already started the process. Okay, so is that your question?
That was my question.
Mrs. Greer is number eight.
Yes.
So then we have an even number? We're going from an odd number to an even number?
We're going to have an odd number with a PUB appointment. You got to have one PUB appointment. You got to have one, okay? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Say nay.
Nay. And I don't oppose Ms. Leanne Greer, Mayor. I just think we need to get the PUB appointment before we get.
Mr. Sisneros is a nay. Mr. Troyani?
Abstained. I don't have enough information.
Mr. Troyani abstains. Next item, City Secretary.
Item seven, consideration and action to appoint one alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, this item has been tabled twice before. Mr. Garza and Mr. Atticson has been working with me. They have identified Ms. Liz Ro- Liz Rodriguez as a candidate for the alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, this, this was put by, uh, Commissioner Sisneros.
Ben?
No, we tabled.
I had gone Dr. Victor Alvarez and I wanted to nominate him, I had.
We tabled it.
Yeah.
Basically, I'm just mentioning that they have called and, and, uh, have identified that person.
Okay, you spoke, you spoke to Mr. Alvarez? Okay.
I did. I'll second that. And, and, uh, he turned in a resume and he made copies for each one.
I don't, I don't have no problem with that.
I wanted to nominate Dr. Victor Alvarez. Second.
Okay, Victor Alvarez is nominated by Commissioners Sisneros and seconded by Commissioners Camarillo.
Real quick, can I say something real quick? Liz Rodriguez, she called us a nay and declined. So whatever you have, go ahead.
Okay. It's on the table.
Any, any further comments?
Oh, one more comment. This, this Victor Alvarez, he serves on the R M A. So he'll be on P N Z and the R M A, which is the, regional mobility. Is there any conflict there with serving as an E T J planning zoning? And where that, where the highways are gonna go? Is there any conflict of interest there?
Uh, no, Commissioner, the R M A is a county.
Yeah, I know, I know, but this guy's also lives in the county.
Yeah, no, there's, there's.
There's no conflict? Okay. Okay, and all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Carries unanimously. Item, uh, next item, please.
Item number eight, consideration and action to appoint three City Commission members to the city's audit committee.
Okay, P Gonzalez, okay. You took a youth pill.
No, sir. Fortunately, Mr. Gonzalez wasn't able to attend today. Uh, my name is Lupe Geronado and, uh, we wish to table this item for next meeting.
Okay, um, the request is to table it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Longoria and seconded by Mr. Camarillo. All in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Move to the next item, please.
Item number nine, public hearing and action to appoint or reappoint two members to the Brownsville Housing Authority.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna ask this to table because, uh, I need to submit, I was out of town. I needed to submit some stuff here to the city attorney. So could I have a motion to table this, please?
Move to table.
Okay. Motion by?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Sisneros made the motion.
Mr. Sisneros, who seconded it? Mr. Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next item?
item number ten, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero twenty to rezone from dwelling Z, classification to medium retail G classification, blocks five and six of Swan Nelson subdivision located near F M eight oh three and Abrego Road.
Honorable Mayor, uh, and City Commissioners, uh, well, they put the map on the screen on this particular case. Uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Atkinson, uh, would, uh, want to have a, a fast food business at this location here. This is eight oh three, uh, and Abrego Road. Uh, he currently on the site has a beautain business, would like to expand to a, uh, fast food, um, like retail, um, type of business. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this application.
Okay, this is a public hearing?
Mr. Atkinson, this is behind the canal where your, where your business is presently at? And there's no conflict or no problems with the propane being there and the fast food establishment?
No, sir.
Okay.
The railroad commission, everything, it's under, uh, you know.
I was out there at the side and you have a great location and, and, uh, I, I'm, uh, full agreement with it.
More power to you for building it out there.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anybody opposing this? Okay.
So move to close.
Close the public hearing? Okay, there's a motion by, uh, Commissioner Sisneros and seconded by Commissioner Longoria to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Move to approve?
Second.
Move to approve by?
Commissioner Atkinson.
Commissioner Atkinson and seconded by Commissioner Sisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item eleven, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero twenty-one dash S to allow a specific use with safeguards for medium industrial power plant subdivision, substation on a general retail classification for portion of block twelve of Amelia subdivision located near Expressway seventy-seven eighty-three and Amelia Lane.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is a site shaded in red. This is the expressway here. Uh, around here, the, uh, sports park is being developed. In this particular case, Mayor, I would like to let you know and Commissioners that this is a protested case. That means that, uh, twenty percent of the surrounding property owners, um, have, uh, have protested. They have submitted a protest petition.
Why was that not indicated? Is that something that was not indicated in our minutes?
Uh, that just came in this afternoon, right before the meeting.
And then they have a deadline to submit?
Uh, they have to submit their petition, uh, before the public hearing. It doesn't give a specific time. Um, in this particular case, the A P, uh, C P N L would like to have a power substation, uh, located at the site. It is a specific use with safeguards. What that means is there's more careful attention being placed where they have to submit a, a engineered drawing of a site plan as to where, uh, the site will be located, what amenities it will have, what kind of landscaping, what kind of tree buffers they would have, what kind of safety precautions regarding fencing, et cetera. They have done all of that. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve this application to you. Uh, as I mentioned, this is a, uh, super majority, which means that six out of the seven have to vote in favor, uh, of this case to override the, the petition. Can you please put the site plan? That's the site, it's just a feeling there's an overhead power line that, uh, is owned by A P C P N L. And the power substation, as you know what, what that is, would be located here. And this is the, uh, engineer drawing, um, we had a glimpse of. Here it is, it's a six acre site, you know? And they wanted to have it on this side of the property. Uh, the owners, uh, the neighbors did come protest at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So what the P N Z approved, what did this side be moved to the middle? Give them space, uh, you know, put it as far away as possible from, from the neighbors. So, so they did put it here. But even with that change, we still have the protest petition. And Mr. Lea, Ella is here, uh, representing those owners.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
Mayor, sit it. Um, my name's Nicolás Vela, I'm the owner right next to that property where they're trying to put that power plant. First of all, they call it a substation. If you see at the plants, they don't say any substation, they say it's power plant. It's something else, not what they're trying to say, there it is. Another thing, when I, uh, they called me and they asked me about wanting to sell the property. One of the things he told me was either you, you get to sell the property or if we build it right next to your property, your property is gonna be devaluated. And that's exactly what they're doing, my property is right next to it and it's fifty feet away from my property. Fifty feet, it's, I mean, it's very close by. I mean, twenty of us, twenty percent of all the people don't like it an- anywhere there. I've got, uh, the, the next door, the, the lady that lives around there also. I've got Mr. Buenrostr, he's here also. He lives on around the property. And, uh, none of us likes the, the idea, especially that it's gonna devalue our property.
Uh, this is a public hearing, is anybody wanna speak against it?
Ben?
Or for it?
Well, I'd like to point out, sir, I mean, who would like to somebody come and tell you, you know what? This is, uh, you sell it to us at, you know, what we wanna pay because that's what they told me. We're willing to offer you this much only. And if you didn't sell it to us, it's gonna devalue. I don't think that's a proper manner to, you know, to come and approach.
Did they offer you market value by any chance, do you know?
No, sir, I never, I never had sent it to, uh, being appraised or how much is value. No, I've never done that before, sir.
Who did you deal with?
The person that I spoke with, Mr. Garcia, right here. And th- those were his correct words, words, sorry about that.
Okay. Um, do you have something to say? Please state your name, please.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. My name is Jerry Don Wilson. I'm the Community Affairs Manager with American Electric Power, Texas, in West Laco. And I just wanted to tell you about the substation here. He was talking about a power plant, it's not a power plant. It's a substation. It just transfers electricity from high voltage to lower voltage is what it does. And it supports a lot of homes. And this area that we're talking about, that we have right there, is when we talked to the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple of weeks ago, we decided we'd go ahead and move it in the middle to satisfy everybody in this situation here with the power, power station as he would call it, or they would call it. It's nothing but a substation. It, uh, it drops voltage from a, from a one thirty-eight K V A line to a distribution line, which is seventy-two hundred. Then it drops down to your home to one twenty and two forty. But it's well needed. This is an area that is vastly growing fast in Omita. And, uh, we, we cover the southern part, no, it's the northern part of Brownsville, about seven thousand customers. And then Omita is on the growth also and it covers Rancho Viejo. And this is a well needed area. It's, it's densely populated, doesn't have that many customers around there.
Is it gonna be, is it gonna be fenced in?
It's gonna be fenced in and it's gonna have plants around it also.
Okay.
The aesthetics are gonna really look good with it.
Is it a cedar fence or?
Uh, it's, it's gonna be, uh, I guess, plants. Uh, I think they're working with the city of Brownsville on that.
How close is it?
Chain link fence.
How close is it?
It's gonna be a chain link fence and then you're gonna put some brush around it and, and, and some flowers and some.
Ben, I'm assuming following the trend, it's a chain link with oleanders on the inside or on the outside?
I'm sorry, there's a chain link and I believe there's a, there's also a cedar fence along with, uh, they work with the tree forester, or the city's, uh, forester and identified what kind of trees here that would, uh, cover that fence over time.
Now, let me ask you this. Sir, your name, I'm sorry, one more time? Vela? Mr. Vela, if Mr. Vela were to build a home, which obviously the, the property is vacant right now, correct? If you were to build a home or any sort of an establishment out there in the future, would he be need, uh, in need of this electrical service? Ben?
I believe, uh, A P has the, I believe P U B and, and, C P N L has a service, is a service provider in that area.
Okay. And by this substation not existing, does that affect him in any way for him to receive services?
No.
I mean, I mean, tell you something. Something about the location out here. It's in a dual certified area. The P U B can serve out there, or A P can serve out there, either way. And I, and, and for this power plant, we have customers that kinda, you know, intermingle out there. Uh, he could be served by us or he could be served by P U B. He's got that choice, so.
Okay, but, but, but also, we gotta listen to the, to the gentleman here, Mr. Vela, that his property is being devalued by that property next to him. I mean, has somebody, has somebody really sat down with him, explained to him, you know, what market value is and what they were willing to offer him? And, uh, I don't know. Was somebody trying to purchase the property from him?
Well, I mean, uh.
I think, I guess he can answer the question.
Hello, I'm sorry, my name is John Garcia and I did try to negotiate with Mr. Vela. Mr. Vela was the second point of contact. My first point of contact was his adjoining neighbor, which has three point four, three acres as well. When I met with Mr. Vela, uh, it was discovered, in fact, I disclosed to him the property that he had just purchased. He had just purchased it, purchased it one year prior to me negotiating to purchase the property from him. That area is currently zoned C four, which is commercial. So I doubt that, uh, a home would be built in, in C four unless he went for rezoning and plating again. Um, I tried to negotiate fair market price with him. Um, I don't want to disclose numbers, but he wanted four times the value of that property and we just couldn't afford that. So I moved on to my fourth choice, which is, uh, the property that you see on site now. This location, we, we were looking at purchasing two acres, but because of, we wanted to keep a buffer because there is a transmission line o- out there as well. There's also an underground natural pipeline that runs through, a high pressured pipeline. So we wanted to keep a buffer between that. Mr. Vela talked to, uh, Mr. Pongue in Planning and Zoning and was concerned originally that we were putting the substation site too close to the back of the property. So we agreed to move, shift it to the center.
Well, um, go ahead.
I don't know if you noticed, but there's also a P U B substation around there. Why can't they move it somewhere closer to there? I mean, they're gonna have, uh, the sport complex right beside it. How nice is it gonna look right beside your sport complex? Why didn't they move it forward down to the, where P U B's at? I mean, if P U B, one of the things he told me, we need to service that, uh, the sports complex. I understand that. But why not move it somewhere else where P U B's at, right next to it? Why does it have to be where houses? Because there is a house right next to there. Mr. Buenrostr lives around there, he doesn't want it also. Who would want anything, something like that around their property?
Okay. Your, your point's well noted, thank you very much. Uh, can I have a motion to close public hearing or does anybody have any questions? Okay?
Motion to close.
Second.
Commissioner Troyani, motion to close, seconded by Commissioner Sisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, this is an action item. Um, do you have a motion to, uh, deny or approve or table or?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Yeah, a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Mayor, one moment. Ben, the, what is the buffer between the two properties? And what's, what's the height of, of their lift station or?
You wanna put the, the map, the, no, the, the, uh, the map, that, well, that map here, okay, I'm sorry. Um, he, uh, this is the properties, uh, here, uh, this is his property. And then you have this little, uh, lots here and the.
There's his homes there.
Yeah, there's homes there.
Okay, but what, what is the buffer? The buffer between the home and where they're gonna build their, their fence and that, and all that?
Um, the buffer will be space and greenery and fence.
No, yeah, I understand that, Ben, but I guess.
Yeah, butts it, I guess.
How big is it, how big is the buffer?
The distance between sites?
He's abiding the property, that's what you're saying, right? Ben, he's abiding the property?
Yes, yes, the property lines are, are touching.
Oh, they're touching?
To make sure, yeah.
But they moved this site to the middle. Okay, it's six acres.
Well, you answered the question, thank you.
Okay.
Let me ask you something real quick. How come P U B didn't try to, is there a need out there?
Well, it's a growing, a growing area.
Well, I'm not saying why, why aren't we giving P U B the opportunity to be out there?
It's dual certified, that's why.
Certified and they're two different companies, two different providers.
But again, Ben, if it doesn't happen, it's not like somebody's gonna not have light tomorrow or the next week.
Well, uh, C P N L, I guess, can answer that.
Key to this whole substation that we're talking about is reliability of service. That's gonna improve the reliability of service for that whole area of Omito, Rancho Viejo and the northern part of Brownsville. And we cover about seven thousand customers out there. There is a need for this substation. And for the area, it's a densely populated area. And the transmission line, if you saw the picture a little earlier that we had, the transmission line is there. It's available. And it's a great location. And it's well needed. And the area will continue to grow.
Okay.
I mean, it's, you, you didn't, you don't have that many customers out in this area we're talking about. And behind there also, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that they have a junkyard there.
I understand. Uh, do we have a motion on the table to deny? Do we have a second or does it die? Okay, the motion dies to deny. Do we have a motion to pass?
Motion to table this until we figure out.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Atkinson and seconded by Mr. Garza to table.[1585.85] All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
One nay? Commissioner Longoria was nay. Okay, next item, City Secretary. Well, let's go, look, I know the Herald's got a print of paper, and there's some people here with the fine arts. Let's move, let's, let's move, item 16. Let's move item 16 up, I think she's staying for that. I should have recognized that sooner.
You think?
Yeah, I think so. But gentlemen, remember this. Keep your, keep your disagreements friendly, okay? Item 16, City Secretary.
Item 16. Consideration and action to rescind the addition of a $2 fee to each customer's monthly public utilities board bill to fund public safety equipment, a culture budget, and the animal shelters' no-kill policy as approved on July 3, 2007, and to request a public hearing and the creation of an ordinance on the matter.
Okay, Commissioner, please, you have a floor.
I know we've, we've heard plenty of discussion regarding this item. Significant discussion regarding the minutes being read as it being failed. I guess I want to make it real clear. The three entities that are being looked at to be funded by the fee are so important to me, as well as everybody on this commission. I vow to help ensure and hopefully come back the following week to do what Commissioner Garza had mentioned, was to establish a committee, each of us allowing to have one member, so that we could look at how we're going to properly fund protective services, which it should be protective services, not just ambulances. Because if we just fund ambulances, we haven't talked about funding the personnel to be in the ambulance, which would be about six or eight individuals, which would cost us about over $50,000. So we haven't considered that. So we can't just go buy an ambulance, yet don't have anybody put them in there. And so that's not the right way to go about it. So that's one. But to look at each of, each of us saying, we're not going to go to 4A, we're not going to go to 4B. We're going to be creative in how we seek the funding source, but so that we could fund protective services, we could fund a cultural budget, and look at making sure we take care of the Camille. I remember going with my grandfather and, and helping him move tables at the Camille and cleaning it up after shows or prior to a show. And so I know that they're hurting. I know they need funds. I want to make sure we can get them, I want to make sure that we're just not putting a Band-Aid on something, and it's going to fall out. I want to make sure we're going to correct the problem for down the road, and not have to come back and say, we messed up. And last, the animal no-kill policy. I want to make sure we're real, real clear on how we do that. But also how we implement a trap-neuter release program, similar to, similarly to what UT Bronzo has, UT Austin, A&amp;M, how we can control our population, and obviously participate in the no-kill policy. So with that, I want to make sure we're going to come back and hopefully a short timetable, address it, and move from that point. And based on that, I'll make the motion to rescind, to properly rescind this, so that we can come back to follow the following meeting and establish a committee, so we can move forward on funding all of the, all of the three entities that we, that I've just mentioned.
Okay, we have a motion to rescind. Does it, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Sisnetos. All in favor to rescind?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay, four nays, and three ayes. I mean, uh.
No, I voted nay because, listen, last night, there was a major accident that occurred here at Boca Chica. There was five people injured. I think one died. There was six ambulances that we have currently. We have 12, but only six are manned. We need some money. And I know initially, the first time, I abstained because I didn't like to take money from the people. I don't want to ask, but since PUB last night took action on that reduction of the.
Service charge.
Service charge from $5.53 to, to, $2.53. That was a $3 reduction, and also a, from 10% penalty to 5%. I think that was great, and I congratulate the, the PUB board for doing that, and therefore I'm changing my vote to, I don't want to rescind it. I want to go ahead and leave it.
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I just want people to know, I mean, people elected us to do the right thing. You know, people get mad, oh, you put $2. But last night, you know, through the mayor and other people, we lowered it $3. So the PUB ratepayer saved a dollar. You know, people need just to trust what we're doing, because we vowed, yes, to lower the rates and the fees at PUB. We're going to do it. But people react real quick on $2, all right? That's fine. You know, but we lowered it $3. But see, I talked to this lady today, she's like, why'd you do this? Why'd you do that? I'm like, look, we're trying to look out for everybody in Brownsville. You know, with this $2, the Museum of Fine Arts, they're going to get like 15,000 kids, poor-income kids. They're going to have a chance to go look through the arts, go study, go take classes. You know what she told me? And this is an elderly lady. She goes, I don't care about the kids. You know? I care about my $2. I go, I don't know, I don't know at what point we, we lose people, but I'm a common sense guy, all right? We raised it two, but then we lowered it three. You, you're saving a dollar after all this. I don't care. You know, I mean, I don't, I don't mean, I come from a, from a, from a common sense family, I guess that, I mean, maybe it was, it was, it was, it was, it was quick on how we did it, but people want, we need to react. We need to, you put us here to make decisions. Trust us. I told, I vowed, we're going to lower the PUB bill even more.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Commissioner Trae, please.
Thank you. I, I think that there's some, there's some confusion, because we have an issue as to the minutes where, was it passed in the first place? It becomes a question of whether or not the last vote was moot. And these are all issues that concern us. I think that everybody wants to fund the arts, everybody wants to have ambulances running. We've got 12. What, what's going on with the other six? Why aren't they, they up and, and moving? And these are all things that we need to discuss, because it's not just the Museum of Fine Arts. We also have the Stillman Museum. We have different entities that are going to need funding. I think Mr. Camarillo made some very good points, is we need to know, what is the cost-benefit analysis of this? And at the end of the day, are we moving ahead? And there's some issues with the vote that need to be addressed. And if we can do that, well, maybe we can go forward. And I don't think that, based on my review of this, that adding to the PUB bill is the way to do it. Now, there's, we're going to be in budget conferences over the next few weeks, and I think we need to look at where we can put some money, and we need to meet with Pete Gonzalez and see where we are financially.
Let me ask one more question. One, one more question.
Very, very limited, okay?
Uh, because I think all this is, we shouldn't even be doing this, because if.
Yeah, if it already failed.
If it failed, then 16,900.
But let's get back on track here. Everybody, I was trying to be a little flexible and give everybody a, a say on this, because I know there's a lot of discussion on it. But let me correct, let me correct the commissioner, please, for one second, okay? That we don't have 12 ambulances, we have some fire rescue. That's a little different. Okay, but please, go ahead.
I want to know the same answer, that, why are we voting on it as if it already failed?
That's not, that's not the issue right now. That's not the issue right now.
I got to know, Mayor, why we're voting on this.
Because I allowed it, I could, I could have easily said that the prevailing side needs to bring it back, and the prevailing side did not bring it back. But I gave Mr. Camarillo the courtesy, okay? But go ahead.
What I would recommend, Mayor, in this case, in, in support of what I think is the consensus of the majority of the commission, is to allow me to prepare an ordinance affecting the same thing that was again expressed through the.
Why don't you do that? Why don't you bring it back, and then we can rescind this at that time and introduce it to ordinance? That'd be great.
If, if that does reflect the majority consensus of the commission, then that would.
I have no problem with it.
That would give us a better, more defensible position in the event that it is challenged. As a home rural municipality, we do have the authority to add additional fees. Placing it in the form of an ordinance would strengthen our position legally if that is the will of the commission.
I have no problem with that. If you want to do that, bring, bring, bring the ordinance with the language that you, that is needed, and we can substitute what we got now with that ordinance.
So this whole scenario is moot?
Well, I would.
The vote's already been taken care of. The, the, the $2 is not rescinded, but in the meantime, he can prepare the ordinance. Okay, what's wrong with that? That's a good compromise.
Mayor, could I ask for a, could I ask for a, I have a request. Stella, are we on time to place, or Stella? Are we on time to place this at our, or is it out of line to place it on our budgetary meeting next week?
I believe the meeting's going to be on Tuesday.
It's going to be on, it's Wednesday, the 25th, which is next Wednesday. I don't, if we'd have an ordinance ready by then, that should be not a problem, but.
No, but you can post it, and he can get it ready by then.
Yes, I need to post this Friday.
Yeah. You post it, and then you have it ready, yeah.
Be ready for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Let's do that. Okay, but this motion right now, as far as rescinding, did not pass. Okay, let's move on to the next item, please. Thank you all, appreciate it. We're getting a little better at this. Thank you very much for coming. I'm sorry for making you wait. Thank you.
Stella, you wanted to say something?
Oh, I'm to understand then that just the, that the city attorney is directed to go ahead and prepare an ordinance.
That's my understanding, and.
Yeah, you're going to prepare an ordinance, she's going to post it, and we'll bring it here with, you know, the way, the way we worded it there to approve it. And that way, that will substitute this, and I'll make it a moot issue. Okay?
Do you need a motion to authorize this?
No, we don't.
It'll be an item to be placed on the agenda as an ordinance. I'll prepare the ordinance and forward that to you, so that we can give notice and, and post the ordinance.
You can just post the, the ordinance, that it'll be brought before the body.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Stella.
Okay, I, I guess item 12 now?
Yes, item 12. Public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-029 to rezone from light retail to general retail G classification, Lot 1, Block 1, out of Ernesto Cortez subdivision, located near FM 511 and Prescott Lane.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, this is a property sitting red here, 511 and the expressways here. In this particular site, the applicant would like to have an auto body shop. The planning and zoning voted to fourth, fourth commercial. It was unanimously approved. He still needs another process to, to finalize this application for his business. But in this particular case, the planning and zoning commission did approve a fourth commercial.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody for or against? Okay, can I have a motion to close public hearing?
So move to close public hearing?
Mr. Longoria moves, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sisnetos. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? No nays? Motion carries. Can we have a motion for whatever? Approval?
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Longoria motions for approval, second by Mr. Sisnetos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please. City Secretary.
Item 13, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-030 to rezone from dwelling G to medium retail G classification, Lot 1, out of La Coma subdivision, located near Calle Milpa Verde and Impala Drive.
Ben?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, City Commission, this is the lot right here, shaded in red. In this particular case, the applicant would like to have a bookstore. The planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you.
Okay, it's public hearing. Is there anybody in opposition to this?
So move to close.
We have a motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Sisnetos, and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Longoria moves to approve, and Commissioner Sisnetos seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Let's go, Mayor.
It's okay.
Item 14, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-031 to rezone from dwelling retail to general retail classification, Lot 9, Block 1, out of Wyomar subdivision, located near Paredes Line Road and Southern Pacific Railroad.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, this is Paredes Line Road. This is a railroad here. You have the, the overpass a little further to the north. In this particular case, the applicant would like to have a tire shop. The planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you.
This is a public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
Second.
Closed by Commissioner Sisnetos, and, and seconded by Commissioner Traeany. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sisnetos, seconded by Commissioner Traeany. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Next item, please.
Item 15, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-501 to rezone from dwelling Z to medium retail G classification, Tandy's Courtenor subdivision, Pasto Verde Phase 1 and Lot 11, Block 3 of Pasto Verde Phase 2, located near Highway 100 and FM 803.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is both a city-initiated and owner-initiated zoning case. The applicant owns a lot here, where he would like to rezone his property to third commercial. He took the initiative and rezoned all of the lots, because of, he acknowledged the threat of third commercial in this part of Highway 100 that's inside.
Don't leave, Carlos. You said something, Commissioner?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Okay. Acknowledged the threat of commercial activity coming into these lots, so in order to facilitate the owners of that, we're zoning the property to commercial.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Any questions? Any opposition?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Garza. Who seconded it?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Traeany. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Action?
With speed 17.
Action, action.
Action item.
Move to approve.
Action.
Action to approve, I'm sorry. Motion?
So move.
Commissioner Garza, second?
For what? Second?
To approve. Commissioner Longoria? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 17, consideration and action to rescind a contract awarded to Cubco Construction, reject all bids received, and authorize staff to rebid the project with a change of scope.
Okay, when this item came up, I pointed out, and I asked what experience the company had with, with paving, and the purchasing officer, Paul Kalapa, never answered me. And I also have a concern that, why is the city bidding out underground utilities when PUB should be doing that? That's their cup of tea. I would like for this to go, be separated, that the underground utilities be sent back to PUB to bid out, and the paving be put out for bids also separate, and just start the process.
Let me, let me, can I, I, I looked into this too. Can you come up here, Carlos? I want to ask you some questions real quick.
Mr. Kalapa, could you approach as well?
Yeah.
Please.
I want to read something from Cubco. I mean, it's, I guess, possible. I mean, it's scare tactics, I think it is. That's all it is. It says, it says if Cubco would not agree to this condition, the city would attempt to rescind an agreement. It says, hold on, real quick. No, 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 hold on. It says right here.
Could you?
Rather, listen real quick. Rather than to have the.
Carlos, for legality purposes, hold on. Settle in. Could somebody please give a copy of this to City Secretary, so that she could have it for the record?
Yes. Okay. It says, it says here, rather than have the contract signed by you, which we contend is simply a misministerial act.
Mysterial.
Yeah, mysterial, whatever. Ministerial, or whatever. Cubco was called by the project manager.
Project engineer.
Project engineer and city engineer, and was told that certain members of the commission wanted Cubco to hire a losing bidder. You're the city manager, you're the city engineer. Has anybody on this commission ever told you, hey, give it to the next bidder?
This is a very serious charge.
This is a very serious charge.
Because if you subpoena, you got to, you got to answer that.
No, I did not.
Nobody in this commission called?
Paul Kalapa.
No.
Okay. Have I ever called you on the phone?
No, sir, you did not.
Yeah, real quick, Paul Kalapa, am I talking to you about what I felt about this? Did I ever say, hey, we need to give it to the lower bidder?
We were giving it to the lower bidder.
We did recommend a word to the low bidder.
Exactly. But did I ever say, give it to somebody else? Okay, what, what I did here, and this is all I did, I looked at it. I realized, I got information from people at PUB, and other people without, and some of, some, some paving companies, that were like, hey, why, why weren't we allowed to bid for it? Why weren't we allowed to do this or that? My, I put this back on because I knew, I found out information that if we would have bided the paving part, I understand if Cubco does what they do, that's fine, I don't care. What I was, what I was looking at, the city part, the city part, we paid an extra $100,000 for this project because we wanted to bid it all together in one. And that's what I was told. That's what alerted me, and that's why I went to Paul Kalapa. Hey, look, I want to know what the deal is. Why, if this company doesn't have experience in, or whatever, why are we not bidding it out to the city? Three months ago, we, we, we have, the city acquired three paving companies. Am I right or wrong?
Yes, we, we did go out for a paving contract, but that is a surface, surfacing contract that is not street reconstruction.
Okay, fine, but they all do services for the city. My, my deal is, why not the city bid out the paving part? Because that's what the city's responsible for. The drainage, drainage company, that's PUB. I mean, I'm not concerned with PUB does.
Underground utilities.
Yeah, exactly. All I'm saying, if we could have saved $100,000 by bidding it ourselves.
Okay, let's, 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 uh.
Can we, I have.
Let me, let me recognize you first, but.
Sure.
I mentioned that, that I wanted to see this brought back, and I think I made very clear before that I had some questions, but my concern, again, is why not send it to PUB to bid the underground utilities? They're the experts in this field. Why is it here before us? And why can't we do it separate? We can do it separate. We can rebid it out. That is our prerogative as the elected body, if we feel that it's in the best interest of the community, and that it will save us money. Okay, we're entitled to that. Okay, based on that, does anyone make a motion?
Wait, I think Mr. Kalapa.
I have questions.
I think Mr. Kalapa had a comment to make.
Mayor, I think you need to let him speak.
Please, please, if you have a comment, please make it.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a comment. First comment I would like to make as to your statement that I did not respond to your question. In fact, I did respond to your question, and I think the minutes would reflect that. We, the response was that the consulting engineer qualified the bidder, because they have done work in the city, and our engineering department has approved the work that this firm that we recommended to you has done in the city. There's no reason why the purchasing department or the engineering department should reject that particular bidder, because they are a qualified contractor. that particular bidder because they are a qualified contractor. That was my response to you at that.
Okay, you say qualified contractors, but isn't it true they're subcontracting the paving?
There is nothing in the bid that request disclosure as to whether they subcontract or they do not subcontract.
You're playing games here, Mr. Kalapa, because if you know that they're subcontracting this, that these people, this company right here is not the contractor to do the paving.
Mayor.
All I'm, all I was asking, Mr. Kalapa, and with all due respect, I was asking what experience this company had in the paving project, not subcontracting, because I didn't know they were subcontracting. I did not know they were subcontracting.
Sir, I have no knowledge of them subcontracting.
So, I wanted a specific as to how much and you did not respond. If I misunderstood you, I apologize, but again, it goes back now to the question of.
We have a letter and I think they can show it from the consulting engineer that lists the streets that this particular firm has done and our engineering department.
Yeah, but this is after the fact, okay? I'm going back to what I'm saying.
Wait a minute, can I?
I'd like, I want to make a comment.
You speak a lot. Wait a second, I'm the one conducting the meeting, okay? Come on, come, okay, okay, let Mr. Kalapa finish and let me recognize you, okay?
And a very easy summation to this is as follows. Going forward, the commission can set a policy for the engineering department to follow to do the bids however you so desire. Historically, streets have been reconstructed in this way so that there's one general contractor responsible, so there's one point of contact, so there is one source of liability. If we have multiple contractors doing work in the same open street, I can assure you in the future that they will be finger pointing as to street failures and the reason why, because the paving guys will blame it on the utility guys and the utility guys will blame it on the paving guys and the city engineers standing somewhere behind me can attest to that.
So, but.
That's the rationale for that. The point remains that this went out as a bid for a lump sum contract and it was styled for the paving and the utility improvements. That is a fact and that is the way the bids were received and the purchasing department and the engineering department recommended the low bid. That is the fact of the matter.
Mayor, could I have one comment as addressed to Commissioner Atkinson? I'll give you the perfect example why. When we as a city go out with our paving crew and we get streets done and P U B doesn't get to that street before we do, we pave a beautiful new street for people and then all of a sudden P U B comes and tears it up. They already did it behind Porter High School and I got big tears in the biggest streets over there. And we spent engineering money, C D B G money, on getting these streets done. And then yet P U B came back and ripped those streets open. That's why we give it to one, Charlie. If we, if we let P U B split it and give it to separate contractors, we're gonna have, somebody can't make it before.
Not as well coordinated.
This guy's on, this guy's on a time limit.
We know about this project. It's not like we're gonna pave before they do the drainage part.
I think Commissioner Torani wanted to say something.
And I want to make a comment too.
I think Commissioner Torani wanted to say something.
Mr. Kalapa, this was done as a unit, which is what you just explained right now, and it was a closed bidding process, correct?
Sealed bid, right?
Sealed, it was sealed bidding process.
This was a formal sealed bid advertised like all of our formal sealed bids are. It was a lump sum bid, which means whatever the lowest price for the entire project would be our recommendation for award and that's what we did.
And that's what we did and we took the lowest bidder at that time and we awarded it at the last meeting, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
One more question.
Wait a second, let me recognize, does anybody on this side have a question?
No, I just wanted to ask, make sure that we went through the proper sealed bid process. We know that they, we awarded it to, they are qualified, the engineers signed off and they were the lowest bidder.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay.
One more question.
Commissioner Camarillo, let me, let me finish with that movie.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I had one question at the last meeting, Mayor. You made it very, very clear when you mentioned the other company's name, well, why didn't they get it? I believe that you mentioned, you mentioned something around, well, why not them? Because they've been, they've done more, they've been here, around here longer.
Experience, yes, I picked up on experience.
We as a commission or you as a mayor, I don't think we can just say, well, so-and-so's been here and done, you know, they've done it longer, therefore I think they should get the job. That's not up to us to decide. That's why they had to seal bid. That's why they have the, the organization in place and we need to let them do the work. If there's wrongdoing and we need to investigate it, then we should. But again, sealed bid, sealed process.
I have a question.
I have a right to question the experience of the people who are being contracted because let me tell you, I've seen jobs where we have to put inspectors twenty-four hours a day because, yes, they came out low bid, but then their work is inferior and it costs us money, I'm talking about P U B, to where we have to, we have to monitor the work, okay? So what I'm saying here, and I made, and this is completely different, what you're, what you all are debating here, I'm saying that the utility should go back to the experts over there, what we have at P U B. They should be bidding that and the city should be paying, bidding the payment. And we should coordinate to make sure those things don't happen like you referred to. And I think we can coordinate them. But that was my position, that's my own opinion, and I think it will reduce, also make it more competitive to where you have people that do underground utilities, well, come out and do that, that don't do paving. Right now, we're excluding underground utilities contractors because they don't do paving. So I think if we get more, more bidders for underground utilities or more bidders for paving, you're gonna have a better competitive bid and a better price for the citizens of Brownsville. That's my opinion.
All I need to add is, Carlos Lassner, the bidding part of the paving, if we, the city would have done it itself, would we have saved money? Yes or no?
Usually it's less because it's just city work, we don't pay, you know.
It would have been less.
Yeah, we don't.
See, that's, that's my point, guys, and you're not listening. Our interest is the city, not P U B. Well, we work with P U B, but the interest was the city. And if the city was gonna save a hundred thousand dollars on bidding it itself, why didn't we do that? That's all I'm saying, Rick, is why didn't we do that? If we could have saved money by letting our people here bid out to the, to the paving companies.
They were the lowest bidder. They were the lowest bid.
But they charged more on the paving part. They charged more on the paving part.
You're gonna make money in one area and you're gonna lose money in another area.
Okay, so let me ask you something. We would have saved money doing it ourselves, you don't think P U B would have made money doing it themselves too?
Okay, I think enough discussion was that.
I have a question, I have a question.
Garza, let me, Commissioner Garza, I think he has something to say and I think he's been very quiet and so maybe he's got something.
The only concern I have is, you said, Mr. Kalapa, that they have, Cubco has done work in the past for the city. Have, have they, what type of work? I mean, Cubco is a utility company.
They have done street construction. I, I have a letter from the consulting engineer.
They've done street or they subcontract?
Have they done excellent work, mediocre work?
I think our city engineer would be better qualified to answer that question.
Who would? I know they did. They did some good work at Cameron Park. Ms. Lestra?
Yeah, they've done several, quite a bit of subdivisions in the city of Brownsville, which our inspectors have inspected with their own paving crews. They did not sub that out and I can attest to that, that our inspectors inspected it. They did build it to city standards and they were found acceptable.
And did we have to assign any of our own personnel to go stand by, be there?
F P B.
Yeah, just, it was standard inspect, or.
Standard, okay.
Standard inspection procedures.
All right, thank you.
Any of the streets, you experienced, have you had any problem with any of the streets?
No, not, not.
All I'm asking, you, you would agree though, that if we would have bid it out separate, we would have saved money, yes or no?
I mean, it's, it's hard to say, not, I mean, not necessarily, sometimes it.
Okay.
You know, it all depends, I mean.
Commissioner.
You gotta understand how it works, Camarillo, just because they're lowest bid.
I think your points, everybody's points well noted. Let's have a motion here either to rescind or.
Real quick question to Jim.
Let's recognize the city attorney, I think he's got something to say.
Mayor, let me ask him a question.
Recognize the city attorney, please.
Thank you, Mayor, just one additional concern and that is the fact that we've awarded the contract and.
And. We haven't signed anything.
But wait a second, let me tell you something, Jim, and I hate to tell you this publicly, I got a second opinion. And second opinion says we can rescind it, okay? And I think you better get educated on the law because we've done this at P U B plenty of times where we have rescinded contracts and we've bidded them out. It's legal and it's proper and I've been there, we've done it, so you can't say, we cannot do it.
I think we have thirty days.
Well, the basis for rehearing this.
Let me ask you a question, Jim, real quick. On the, on the first, no, I've been trying to talk for a little bit and you guys keep talking. Hold on, wait a minute.
Let it finish.
Let me finish, let me finish, okay? Jim, let me ask you something, because I've been trying to ask you, okay? On, did we already, we awarded it and we already passed it on the second reading? When we started the meeting?
Second reading hasn't passed, we just did it last week.
On the minutes and when we voted tonight, we did the second reading.
That's the minutes, that's separate to rescind, rescinding.
Let me just say in response to all of these questions, Mayor, it's, it's possible that we will be challenged on this and will prevail.
We can be challenged on anything. If you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna make rulings and decisions based on that one, then everything should be rejected because we can be challenged on everything.
And I just want to say, this letter that they, they.
I don't like this letter.
It's a lie.
I don't like that letter.
It's a lie. You know, and these guys give you paperwork and they're lying.
And I'm not gonna be intimidated by anybody, by.
You want to be intimidated and we know who you find.
If they want to sue us, let them sue us, that's why we have a legal department.
We're the lowest bidder to rescind.
Hold on one second. The only way that you can readdress this issue is if you have new evidence. And I'm sure the mayor's aware of that based on being at P U B. What is the new evidence that we've heard? We heard that they had done work for the city before, we heard that from Mr. Kalapa the last time and now Mr. Kalapa has brought additional supporting evidence of that. So where is this new evidence? So we can be sure that we have it on the record now.
Let me respond to that. First of all, you don't need new evidence. The city commission or the P U B board can by whatever decide to bring it back and rescind it and rebid it, whatever, okay? In this instance, I'm pointing out, in this instance, I'm pointing out that I feel that this should be bidded out by P U B. Please.
Make your motion.
Of the utilities.
Make your motion.
Our consulting engineer, Mayor, can you, can he get a word in, please?
If you want to do it.
Yes, please.
Excuse me, what was the comment?
Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Ed Mundo Gonzalez with Gonzalez Engineering. I've been practicing consulting engineering in Brownsville since nineteen seventy-nine. I've done these type projects ever since then, when I started with Lockwood Anderson Unum. The, the, this type of projects has moved from doing it one way to move it a different way. Originally, the P U B would assign projects to consultants to do water and wastewater and then the, the city would assign projects to do paving and drainage. Drainage, of course, is surface drainage, but it's also covert underneath the ground that connect the drainage system. So, when, when, maybe about ten or twelve years ago, it changed to, to looking at individual areas of town when the community development type projects came about and they decided, well, let's, let's avoid having the street paved and then cut by P U B and, and vice versa, you know, having one ahead of the other and tearing up the other's work. The other reason why these projects have been combined is because you're looking at the overall project for the, for the benefit of not just the city, but the P U B at one time and get the lowest bid for the package of repairing those certain streets in that part of town. When you look at the, when you look at the overall project, it also helps the city and the P U B to have a construction project manager, one company that oversees that whole work, that whole project so that the, the guy that does the sanitary sewer doesn't point the finger at the guy that did the storm sewer and say, hey, you screwed up and you're delaying my project. This way, one construction company is in, is in charge of traffic control, in charge of project management, starts from the bottom up and combines the, the, the system where the, the underground utilities are put in first and then the paving at the end.
But isn't it also true, Mr. Gonzalez, that, let's say, I, I am not qualified to do paving or I don't have the experience to do paving, okay? I just do underground utilities. If I'm given the opportunity to bid for that project of underground utilities, knowing that I can't do paving, so I can't bid for the paving, so I'm out. I'm out. You're excluding me because you combine both. Also, isn't it true that I can shave off if I subcontract or I do both, okay? I can shave off on the utilities and raise it on the sea, on the paving to where I can make a lot more money this way and it appears that you're getting a good deal, but in this instance, you could be paying more. Isn't that true?
Well, that's true, that's always a possibility.
But, but isn't, but isn't it welcome to bring more bidders to the table?
Well, what it does, it, it lets you look at the overall project and if you have a company, and Cubco, I've got a list of the projects that they've done, both the, the storm drainage and the paving. So in, in some ca, in, in my opinion, when you look at repairing the street to bring it up to current P U B standards and we did go through every step of the way with P U B project engineers, design engineers, we got everything approved. Matter of fact, on, on Jackson Street, there's, there's a twenty-four inch sanitary force main, which is a significant type of project. And you look at the overall repair of those streets and, and you look at one best bid and that's why they are combined.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any further comments or can I have a motion?
One more comment and it goes back to this. I understand what, what you're saying, but it still doesn't take away from the fact that we have paving companies that even have a chance to bid. You know, we have three of our own that we contracted, two of them weren't allowed to bid. We understand the second bidder was who, G T paving, right? They didn't make it. I don't have a problem with them not making it or anything.
Who were they, Commissioner? Who didn't make it?
The second bidder was G T paving for the whole project. But there was other paving companies that weren't allowed to bid because they didn't have.
And who were they?
There's companies out there that have called me, but they didn't have the experience to do the engineering part.
And utility part.
The utility part. There's other, there's other companies out there that say, hey, how come I didn't have a chance to bid on it? Or you don't do electrical, or boss, but I'm just gonna do the paving part.
Let's close the discussion now. Let's close the discussion, let's have a, let's have a vote on this matter. Do we have a, do we have a vote to rescind or not? A motion to rescind? Do I have a motion to rescind?
I'll, I'll motion to rescind this.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor to rescind, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
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 Okay, so you got.
And I don't want these types of letters anymore.
Okay, so it was not rescinded.
Was that aligned with this company?
Yeah, it's all intimidation.
Yeah. Next item?
No, it was low bid.
And that is sad when somebody's writing to threaten us. Next, next letter, I mean, next, agenda item. Please, City Secretary.
Item number eighteen. Consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero thirty-seven regarding the reconstitution of the Brownsville Health Development Corporation and the appointment of a board of directors.
Honorable Mayor, members of commission, this item was put in the finance department, but I would like to introduce two individuals that we cover in this agenda item. First one would be Joseph Eckert with attorney with McCall, Parker, St. Horton. And the second individual would be Leslie Bre- Abraham, Valley Baptist CEO.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for including us on your agenda this evening. The, my name is Joe Eckert, I'm with McCall, Parker, St. Horton and also with me tonight is Leslie Bingham, who's with Valley Baptist Medical Center in Brownsville. We're here before you today to ask that you reconstitute the Brownsville Health Facilities Development Corporation. The Brownsville Health Facilities Development Corporation was originally incorporated in nineteen eighty-five. The, due to a, probably an oversight in filing paperwork, it was involuntarily dissolved by the Secretary of State in nineteen ninety-five. And essentially, the, the way that happened is nonprofit corporations may have to file a periodic report and if they fail to file that report, the Secretary of State will involuntarily dissolve you. So, the, the whole purpose of the Health Facilities Development Corporation is to issue tax-exempt revenue bonds that are a no obligation of the city and really not an obligation of the issuer, they're only an obligation to the extent that the issuer receives funds from the, the hospital that's using the proceeds. The, I, so basically, we're requesting that you authorize us to reconstitute the Brownsville Health Facilities Development Corporation, that you appoint a board of directors to the Health Facilities Development Corporation and we have proposed that you appoint yourselves. Also, to appoint a president of the Health Facilities Development Corporation and a secretary and authorize the Health Facilities Development Corporation to take the necessary actions to reconstitute itself and to authorize us to go forward with the initial steps in the financing.
Financing comes from where?
The, the financing, basically, the Health Facilities Development Corporation would issue bonds to the public and the proceeds of those bonds would be loaned to the Valley Baptist Medical Center at Brownsville. Again, there's no obligation on the part of the city.
You have action?
Okay, well, the bonds would be issued, then you would then be able to refinance that and what is the, I mean, is that the end goal here or?
The, the purpose of the, again, right now, we're just focusing on, on getting the issuer reformed. But the end goal would be that once the issuer is reformed, Valley Baptist Medical Center would go to the issuer and say, please issue bonds for us. The issuer would issue the bonds, loan the proceeds to the hospital and the, the bonds would be repayable through payments made by the hospital.
What are the?
They would get the benefit of, of being tax exempt.
Okay, and then what are the specific items that you're looking as far as projects for the hospital? What are, what are some of those issues as well?
The, and I'll, I'll let Leslie address this, but essentially, I think there are two uses of proceeds.
Thank you, yes, we have two goals. One would be just to refinance the debt that we have on the hospital. So Valley Baptist Health System bought the hospital about three years ago from Tenant Healthcare and it's an opportunity for me to refinance the debt and at a lower rate. The other is I have an eight million dollar surgical renovation project where we're renovating all of the O Rs at V M C and so the eight million dollars would go for that and those are the, the two uses.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Down here.
Down here. Um, Mr. Eckert, is, are there other, uh, uh, agencies out there that could serve in the same capacity? That could function as a conduit essentially to, uh, help assume the, the, the bond issuance?
There are other entities, but if you go outside of the jurisdiction where the money is being spent, you have to get additional consent. For example, if you use the, just by way of example, if the Dallas Health Facility, or the Tarrant County Health Facilities Development Corporation. But if we went to them, then we've got to also go to Tarrant County. We've got to come back to Brownsville, and then we've got to come back to Cameron County and get additional consents. So the easiest way is to use, use a Health Facilities Development Corporation, uh, where the problem is located.
Do you have a timeline for this?
Pardon me?
Is there a timeline, is, was a question?
Do you have a timeline for, for some middle?
The, the, the timeline for the financing is to close it on the week of, I believe, August twenty-second. Each, each of these, there are a number of steps that need to be accomplished before that time. The, the first of which is, is reforming the issuer. Once the issuer is reformed, we can file a notice of intention saying we want to issue these bonds with, with the commissioners. And we can also, uh, publish the notice of a public hearing. Both those have to be fifteen days in advance.
I'm sorry, we have done this in previous commissions, and this is simply just them going out and, but the city needs to be the one that initiates. But unfortunately, when we did it the last time, we did have a session where we went through a workshop. I'm sorry to tell you that, you know, your brief presentation right now for me to approve, although the hospital does assume the, the financial responsibility for the bond, I would appreciate it if you would please oblige us, maybe with a work session or with a presentation, if, if that's not putting you, that's why I ask what time constraints you have. I'm, I'm, trust me when I tell you that I'm all for you, and I am in support in everything you've done for this community. It's just that I'm being bombarded all of a sudden, you know, we need to put our name on. And like I told you, I understand you are, you are fully financially responsible. But before we do put the city's name, I believe, if anybody in this commission is opposed, maybe we could have some sort of a workshop or a pre- a brief presentation, as brief as you could make it, so that we would be able to, you know, understand, clearly gra- have a grasp for what's going on.
Well, based on, on what you've just told us, I mean, it seems like you've got an eight million dollar liability that you wanna, you wanna start on the new O R, uh, projects. Uh, we have a, uh, finance meeting, I believe, on the twenty-sixth. Would it be possible to get them on?
How, how much time would you need for a presentation?
The, the presentation could be done very shortly. If, if it would work with the commission, what, what I would propose, fir- first of all, this is not, the action we're asking you to take is not to approve the bonds. We still have to come before you again.
Just to initiate the process?
This is to initiate the process, sir.
But I agree with Commissioner Longoria that I would want to know a little more before making a decision. Not that I'm for or against or anything like that, it's just that, uh, I need to know more about it.
Mayor, and I, and I'm sorry to continue to, to make.
This is a motion to con- to table.
To make the, to make the, the meeting next week longer. Estella, but if you would, could you please add a presentation and the same action item at our meeting next Wednesday afternoon? Is that, is that possible on your schedules? Is that?
I'm sure it will be.
Okay, then, I'll, I'll move to rescind my motion, 'cause I had a motion on table.
We got a motion to.
Take it away. So now I move to table?
Okay.
Or do we move to continue?
We got, do we have, we have.
I'll second, I'll second Commissioner Longoria's motion.
We have a motion to table by Commissioner Sisneros and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo.
Move to continue.
Is it to table or to continue?
Okay, it's not to table now, it's continue.
Move to continue.
Simply continue to the next.
Commissioner, uh, Sisneros makes a motion to continue and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor to continue? To what date?
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-sixth, okay.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Okay, next Wednesday, twenty-fifth. Yes?
I'm, I'm just gonna respectfully request that, that you consider approving the reconstitution, uh, bec- because if we delay till next week, it will delay the financing timeline.
Can you, I'm sorry, can, can you give him a brief as to the, as to the mission or the reason for the, uh, medical facility? And this is the, the, this is not to, for the facilities that they have running right now.
Yeah, but they're asking us to put.
This is for the facility, uh, the older Valley Regional Hospital, and, and the purpose for that.
Hey, actually, uh, um, respectfully, this one happens to not be for the, for the old Valley Regional. Um, but, but we are making, but we are making some improvements there. But I think what, what this goal is, this was an entity, this was an instrument that already existed. The former owners just kinda accidentally let it expire, just through state technicalities. So all we're really asking today is just to revive the entity.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to reconstitute.
There is, it's already a motion. Okay, wait a second. Let, let her finish, okay?
No, I understand what she, what they're asking for. To reconstitute the Brownsville Health Facilities Development Corporation. That's it. That's all.
We draw your motion first.
Oh, the other one already happened.
Okay, so.
They're gonna come before us on, on the twenty-fifth, but they just need to re- constitute the Brownsville Health Facilities Development Corporation.
But the motion was to continue.
That's not gonna have to do anything with the bonds.
But the motion was to continue the meet.
And we voted on that, right?
No, we didn't.
So then why?
Withdraw your motion to continue.
Okay, I withdraw the motion, then I remake a motion to reconstitute.
Oh, wait a second, okay, you redraw your motion, okay, let's start over again. Now, you haven't made a motion to reconstitute.
To the Brownsville Health Facilities Development Corporation.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. Uh, Penning, would you please still come back to us next week with a presentation?
That's it.
Second, Mayor.
Okay, a second by Commissioner Longoria. No, it's fine, it's fine. As long as we get it right, okay? Commissioner Longoria seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Yeah, 'cause I don't know enough about it, so.
We're gonna come back.
Come back and bring, okay, next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nineteen.
Yeah, one nay on that one, uh.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yours.
Just one?
Consideration and action to adopt budget amendment resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero thirty-eight to amend the general fund by one hundred thousand dollars to provide funding for the city's portion of the drainage easements for the Texas Department of Transportation's Farmer Road five-eleven expansion project.
Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, uh, finance department recommends, uh, favorable approval of this with one revision on page three. Instead of coming out of the fund balance, we request that it be changed, uh, coming out of the sales tax revenues.
Move to approve.
So where would that be from, Lupe? If it's coming out from there?
From sales tax.
What account is it?
Oh, um, let me give you a revised page on that.
General Fund Drainage Eastman five-eleven.
Oh, it's still out of the general fund, but through the sales tax portion.
And this is what we discussed last week in relation to the.
It's coming out of another line item.
And eastman acquisitions, we needed a.
You're okay with this, right? Can we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Atkinson. Oh, Leo, and, uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garza, and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, City Secretary.
Item twenty. Consideration and action to authorize the filing of a grant application and accept awarded grant in the amount of thirty thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the Texas Department of State Health Services.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and, uh, Commissioners. We, as stated by the City Secretary, we're seeking your approval to file this, a grant for sixteen thousand before the Texas Department of, of State Health Services, and then to accept another one that we've, uh, approved for thirty thousand and two hundred and, I'm sorry, thirty thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Second. So moved by Commissioner Sisneros, by Commissioner Camarillo, and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Honorable.
Item twenty-one. Consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero thirty-nine to authorize a city manager to accept a grant award in the amount of one million sixty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars from the Texas Automobile Theft Prevention Authority for Project South Texas Auto Theft Enforcement Task Force for fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight.
Mayor, uh, members of City Commission, good evening. The City of Brownsville, who is the grantee for the South Texas Auto Theft Enforcement Task Force, has been awarded a grant by the Texas Automobile Theft Prevention Authority in the amount of one million sixty-nine one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Of that amount, four hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars is the City of Brownsville's share.
So move, take, sub.
I don't think anybody will. We have a motion by Commissioner Sisneros and a second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, next time you have something like that, let me know, and I'll move it up for you, okay? I hate to make you wait all this long.
I think that's our first unanimous vote that we've had.
Item twenty-two. Consideration and action to authorize an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority regarding the East Loop project.
Mayor, I'm gonna introduce Pete Sepulveda. Again, uh, he's, he's been assisting us in, in, uh, you know, futuristic pro- a project, the East Loop, that we want to make a, uh, reality a lot sooner. And, uh, through funding sources that, uh, that the R M A has researched for us, uh, we feel that this project is, is very viable, viable to, uh, come to fruition, uh, sooner than we thought. It's a hundred and forty million dollar, the East Loop project. Uh, but, uh, in, in, in working with Pete, uh, the R M A, we feel that if we, uh, if we, uh, apply to Tech Dot and their commission, that, uh, we can make this project come, come forth pretty soon. It, it does require an application fee that, uh, the city will, we, we burden with, uh, a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. We feel we can break this up into a two-year, uh, fee, uh, half and half. And, uh, uh, as you see, the expressway project that we have now is about finished, and it's really improved the, uh, the traffic congestions and things like that. And, uh, we're working with Tech Dot to just about finish that, so, uh, uh, we're, we're excited about this, and I, and I would like Pete Sepulveda to, uh, expound on it and, uh, respectfully, uh, request, uh, your consideration on this.
Um, City Manager, where exactly is the, uh, start of the East Loop? Off of military or further north?
Let, let me, let me have about Pete to expound on that, so.
'Cause I've been asked that question. I thought it started right off military going through West Brownsville.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. What this interlocal, um, would allow the R M A to develop a pass-through financing application for the East Loop project. The parameters of the project are from the Veterans Bridge on, on seventy-seven to the Port of Brownsville, from the Port of Brownsville to U S seventy-seven via five-eleven. Uh, as you all know, that stretch of East Loop from the Gateway Bridge or from downtown Brownsville to the Veterans Bridge is complete. So when we complete this project, you know, you'll have East Loop going from downtown to the Veterans Bridge, to the Port of Brownsville, and to Expressway seventy-seven.
So it'll go behind Fort Brown there? Is that part of it?
Yes, that's existing.
But then, then will it connect over here to the west side on the military?
No, that's the west.
But it'll connect to it, right? It won't, it won't connect it?
This, this will go, like I said, from the Veterans Bridge, Expressway seventy-seven. It'll go east, um, all the way to the Port of Brownsville, and then from the port, it'll go to Expressway seventy-seven via five-eleven.
Pete, give me, give me a chance. It'll start at the, at Veterans Bridge. It'll go on the levee behind Impala Pumps, all the way out past Bostato, past Monsees Road, connect with Southmost, connect to five-eleven, all the way out to the.
How many lanes is it gonna be?
It, it'll be, uh, two lanes, but, um.
Okay. It's just good to know. I just.
What, um, Tech Dot has, has pretty much told us that, you know, they have no plans on funding this project in the next ten years. And so what a pass-through finance project would allow you to do is, it allows an entity, in this case, the R M A, to come in, finance the project upfront, and then annually, based on the level of traffic, they will reimburse the R M A, you know, X amount of dollars that will go towards the retirement of the debt. The actual end user will never have to pay a toll. That money will come from Tech Dot. You know, they'll set counters, and, and they'll establish an average daily traffic, and then based on that average daily traffic, they'll reimburse the R M A. Now, there's three different type of pass-through, um, financing projects. One is your, your local projects, uh, which are just local arterial streets. Second one is projects that might have a regional significance. Um, and, and those, those have implications on regional mobility. And then the third one is projects that have a statewide significance. The, your local projects, Tech Dot will reimburse you up to fifty percent on your principal. Your regional projects, they'll reimburse you up to seventy-five percent of your principal. Your statewide significant project, Tech Dot will reimburse you up to one hundred percent of your principal amount. Charlie just mentioned, the cost, the estimated cost of the project is a hundred and forty million dollars. So we have, the East Loop is in the third category, a statewide significance project. So we have an opportunity to get up to a hundred percent reimbursed on our principal by Tech Dot. The idea in putting the application together, as Charlie mentioned, is perhaps we can get this done, or perhaps we can start construction, you know, in three years, as opposed to ten or fifteen years that it would take Tech Dot to do it. This, this, this application, we will develop it, take it to the Highway Commission, negotiate the percentage. As I just mentioned, we can go up to a hundred percent, and we'll try and get as, as high a percentage on our reimbursement as possible. Then the idea is gonna be to identify other sources so that we can utilize to retire the debt on this project. This was discussed at the N P O meeting, um, that, that was held last week, um, and the N P O director, you know, was, was in favor. We had a real, uh, good receptiveness to, um, the R M A and the city moving forward, um, on, um, on this project.
So that brings an answer to why I never got emails from Rick Eagle anymore.
Well, they're, they're still working on that, because they're, they're working on getting the project environmentally cleared. And once the project is environmentally cleared, then we can come in, purchase it right away, uh, do the final design and engineering, and then the actual construction. But their, their, their portion of the work would still be there.
Pete, is it possible the next five years for, for Tech, Tech Dot's position to change? To possibly fundage down the road in the next five, seven years, eight years?
No.
No. That's because they've, their budget, it's set.
I, I met with the director of the engineer operations, you know, in, in, in Austin last week, and, and, you know, the answer is no.
No consideration.
There's no, no funding. There's gonna be very limited funding available for new construction. The majority of the funding is gonna go towards maintenance of the existing roads.
Thank you, Pete. Um, can we have a motion?
So move to approve.
Second.
A motion by, uh, Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you.
Item twenty-three. Consideration and action to accept the two thousand and five C I P Street and Drainage Contract Number One and release retainage and final payment to G and T Paving Incorporated.
Mr. Lastra.
Honorable Commissioners, uh, we have a final payment for some streets, uh, for, total of fourteen streets in the Country Club and Town North area. Other work has been completed. Uh, we recommend approval.
So move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion was approved by Commissioner Sisneros, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Garza. And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item twenty-four. Consideration and action to accept thirty-first year Community Development Block Grand Street and Drainage Improvement Project and to release retainage and final payment to R and R Paving.
Mr. Lastra.
Uh, Honorable Commissioners, uh, this is another street project in the Southmost area, consisted of three streets in Southmost area. The work has been completed and, and accepted. We recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
Okay, second, I mean, uh, moved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. Leo, Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item twenty-five. Consideration and action to accept the two thousand and six C I P Street and Drainage Contract Number Six, Project Wild Rose Lane, and to release retainage and final payment, payment to G and T Paving Incorporated.
Mr. Lastra.
Uh, Honorable Commissioners, uh, this is another street project, and I'm particularly proud of this project because, uh, this was designed in-house by our staff. We bid it out, did the whole process in-house, uh, and we actually saved the city close to thirty thousand in engineering fees by doing it in-house.
And they did a real good job on the street.
Prove.
Second.
Motion by Camarillo and seconded by Mr. Sisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner Lastra.
Thank you, Mr. Lastra. Next.
Item twenty-six. Consideration and action to awarded contract for the purchase of football equipment for the City of Brownsville's East Football League.
Second.
Okay. Okay, uh.
No, just.
They don't want you to speak. I got a motion.
I take my vote on.
We can vote on it. Who, who votes? Okay, Longoria made the motion, who seconded it? Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Come on.
Mayor, could you, let it.
Okay, you wanna make your speech?
Oh, it's a good deal because it's for the kids. That's.
It's okay. So we wanna hear you.
This is a positive side to the, what we do in the City Commission, 'cause it is all. This is a positive side to what we do in the City Commission, because it's all about the children.
Hear you.
Job, Charlie.
At the request of our Parks and Rec Director, Skip Keller, the Purchasing Department has solicited a buyboard proposal for this procurement under Section 791025 of Contracts for Purchases of the Texas Local Government Code. The bidding requirement has been satisfied by the Texas Local Government Purchasing Cooperative, or Buyboard, an agency with whom the city of Brownsville has entered into an interlocal agreement. Parks and Rec Department has worked together with BSN Sports Collegiate Pacific to develop specifications for football equipment requirements for the subject project. This project consists of the purchase and delivery of football equipment and uniforms for the city of Brownsville Youth Football League. BSN Sports Collegiate Pacific is the buyboard awarded contractor for this type of football gear and equipment. And the quotation is attached in your packet. Our recommendation is award of this contract to BSN Sports Collegiate Pacific of Dallas, Texas. The amount is $48,008.85.
Okay, in discussion, any questions?
Go ahead.
Did you have something to say, Commissioner Atkinson?
I just want to say that-
Fair speech, too.
No, not really, I just want to say this is a long time coming, and thanks with the Commissioners and the Mayor's help, we're able to bring something back to Brownsville that wasn't, to me, the reason to live is for kids' sports. And there's certainly just football, but to have, you know, just kids getting together, learning the sport.
This is going to kickstart it, I mean, Commissioners, I know you worked real hard on this. I want to thank Robert Tyler. He's been working extremely hard. Tony Severa from the Parks Department.
I want to thank Charlie Cabler, too, and Tony Severa, and everybody here. Rick on 4B, El Tassad, and everybody here. Just to put it all together and know that it's for the kids, and that's what I'm about. You know, all these other things that we argue about, you know, they just go off the wayside, but this is what it's about, you know, right here. I move to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
For Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Cisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item twenty-seven, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of additional Spillman software programs enhancement modules for the current computer-aided dispatch and records management system program for the Public Safety Information System of the Brownsville Police Department.
Mr. Calapa.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. For the benefit of the newly elected officials, we prepared a recap for you as part of our analysis. We'll start off by stating at the City Commission meeting back in December of '04, a contract was awarded for the purchase, installation, and training and support of a public safety information system for the Brownsville Police Department to Spillman Technologies of Logan, Utah. That went through a proposal process, and the amount, the amount of that contract was $1,086,844. In October of 2006, after the original maintenance agreement had expired, we brought back before the commission a technical support renewal agreement. Again, that was awarded to Spillman. The amount then was $76,581, so it brings us up to today. At the request of our Police Chief Carlos Garcia, the Purchasing Department has solicited a proposal from Spillman Technologies, a public safety information system provider, for additional software programs enhancement modules for the current computer-aided dispatch and records management system program. The determination has been made that this procurement is exempt from, from the competitive bidding statute and shall be considered as captive procurement. And the rationale there is since we already have the nucleus of the software in place, which was a million-dollar system, we're adding modules now to this particular software. It's very common, as the city becomes comfortable with a software program, it will expand and add additional modules that will do other features than the original program did. The four modules that we're recommending for award this evening are the evidence management, barcoding, pin mapping, alarm tracking, and in-code courts interface. And then there's a little summary of what each of those modules do in your agenda. Our recommendation to you this evening is your consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of this additional software to Spillman Technologies. The amount is $179,530 for the four modules. If these modules were purchased separately, you can see that the value would be $216,490. By doing this as a package, PD is saving $36,960. Funding is in place. Municipal Court is stepping up to the plate with $100,000, and the Police Department will pay the balance of $79,530.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, gentlemen, I want to thank you. It's getting a little better. It's okay to disagree, but, you know, it's, it's good to be working together even if we disagree. Thank you. Hopefully, the next meeting will get a little smoother. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed can stay. Thank you.